Okay, Paul, we're live. Go ahead.
Okay, got a call to order our Board of Education study session October 8th, 6 o'clock. Lucy, take attendance?
Uh, all board members are present.
Okay, I'm just gonna read a brief statement to kind of explain what's going on tonight. So, welcome to the first ever Bloomfield Hills hybrid synchronous simultaneous remote and safely distance face-to-face board study session. This is being livestreamed and recorded for future viewings. You may submit a public comment, make one in person, or read via on on our WebEx, our new platform. You may watch in person, first come, first served due to distancing protocols, live or at your leisure. We are attempting to conduct a public meeting that meets the needs of all members of our community as well as the board is safe and is actually possible to hold. It took two full days to plan the logistics of this meeting, so warrants and pit of two explanations. In recent light, confusing and conflicting instructions, orders from the governor, Supreme Court, and Department of Health and Human Services, and follow-up from district and state Board of Education attorneys, we are reasonably certain that there is no correct way to hold a public meeting in Michigan. So we're looking for right, what you're looking at right now is the Bloomfield compromise. And as crazy as it sounds, it's exactly what we've been dealing with regarding educating our students. We are trying desperately to deliver education information in a format that our families and community needs. To the extent that it's possible, we are. This involves compromise, honesty, and overall understanding. Tonight, for example, we asked who would be willing to meet either in both formats, and we compromised. We will rotate if we need to. Ironically, this is the same approach we are taking with our return to learn plans. With all the planning and accommodations that one public meeting required, I've learned a few valuable lessons. Provide as many options as possible, give as many choices as possible, willing to compromise. Of course, it helps a lot if everyone respects and supports each other. So with that, I'm gonna go to public comment. Do you have any public comment in person? No? So I'm gonna go to public comment virtual. Keep in mind, we will do it now because we obviously arranged this meeting last second, but in future, if we are gonna hold a portion of these meetings by our board here live, we're gonna have to have public comment. People would have to come here live and submit public comment. We just got a ruling from one of our attorneys indicating that, but if it does get updated, we will let people know as soon as possible. With that, I will start reading our public comment. We need our kids to return, we need our kids in school four to five days. The law allows for that. Parents want that. Private schools have been functionally functioning successfully since mid-August. Why should our kids be left behind academically? People have put their kids on waiting lists for private schools. Our district is going to lose more and more students. The other districts in the area are opening up five full days. We can do the same. Being in one of the best districts in Michigan and not getting the best education isn't right. We can open up fully and keep precautions in place. The teachers are doing the best they can, but they are tired too. The hybrid system isn't working. It's just helping the kids not, it's just helping the kids not fall behind, but they aren't moving forward. Our kids need more as a district, we can do better. You wanna rotate them? All right, I'll read one more and then we can rotate. In March, April, and May of this year, with so many unknowns, the medical profession stepped up and went to work. Healthcare administration, front desk receptionists, janitorial staff, working medical offices in hospital nurses, physicians, et cetera. They went to work every day. They didn't have the choice to stay home, and it was essential they worked. Now in October, many months later, we know so much more. We know what to do and how to protect ourselves. It's time for the medical professionals to pass the baton on to education. All sectors of education need to step up now. School has been and always been the essential. Our children are suffering beyond belief, and our parents are dying on the vine as we watch our friends and family's children and neighboring and neighboring and same only schools go back every day. When occurrences, when occurrences come up, they take a few days off, break it down, clean up, and get right back every day. Get right back to it. And it's okay. Our children and our district deserve the same. We must have a quick plan on reassuring full-time now. Our children are falling behind, not being in full-time educational, social setting since beginning of March, seven months ago. This 2.5, 2.5 hours, four days a week, does not work for anyone. We need our children back in school full-time. We need them back and we need them back at school full-time yesterday. Bloomfield Hills' parents have been back and watched as our, as our parochial, private, and surrounding districts have stepped up and done it well. Let us know what the plan is now before we lose even more families to other districts and schools who are making it work. It's education's time now.
Okay. We support face-to-face learning now. What that means is we are willing to accept the risk and do not hold the board accountable for our actions. If some families or teachers wish to remain virtual, that is acceptable and their choice, but we do not want our choice taken away. That is un-American. The data supports that it is safe. The question I would like answered is, if not now, when? If board members or families are waiting until zero cases, that day may never come, even with a vaccine. It is time to move forward, even with uncertainty, as we do every day. There are many reasons we're asking for this. Today, I'm touching on only one. Kids with IEPs need the structure and support of face-to-face learning. I'd like to share a story with you. My 10-year-old daughter Natala was recently put on an IEP in early 2020. Mrs. Carlson and others began seeing Natalia on a virtual basis once services started. I pushed for face-to-face sessions for all of her support services, even though I was challenged a bit, and was successful getting this scheduled once she was able to return for face-to-face learning with the other students on September 24th. I received a phone call from Mrs. Carlson following her very first face-to-face session. When I heard her introduce herself, I immediately got a pit in my stomach, thinking, oh no, what did Natalia do that warrants a call home? But she was quick to assure me nothing was wrong. She was calling to tell me how amazing it was to work with Natalia face-to-face, and how she is an entirely different kid, face-to-face versus in a virtual setting, and how focused and responsible she was to be during their session. These attributes do not come easily to Natalia. I was so excited to hear this news, so excited that I started crying. After I collected myself, I sincerely thank Mrs. Carlson for taking the time out of her busy day to share that amazing news with me. It was such a moment of accomplishment for me. I've been fighting a battle that I knew was important for Natalia, and my thoughts were confirmed. Natalia needs that face-to-face interaction. This is the reason our kids need to be back in school, face-to-face, on a full-time basis.
The hybrid model is off to a wretched start. Both my third and fifth grade have spent their mornings without homeroom, teacher meetings, and seem to be given very little to do. Aside from the daily specials, music, and gym, there was no teacher interaction. This is not even close to adequate by any stretch of the imagination. Face-to-face are okay, but 12 hours a week of hands-on instruction is utterly inadequate. We need full, we need full-time face-to-face like so many of our surrounding communities and can do it safely. I've heard some of the board express concern that they cannot make a choice that can possibly harm a student, administrators, support staff, families, and so on. And this is fine, and no one is asking for a decision by a select few to be imposed upon all of us. What I'm asking for is a right to make my own decision. I, like every other stakeholder, all weigh the risk for myself and make the informed decision. I would object to being stripped of this. I'm curious as to, I am curious as to why there is no active instruction on Wednesdays. I'm also disappointed at the amount of asynchronous time on the other days. As of now, our children have less than 12 hours of instruction per week. This is unacceptable. The children need a full day of instruction, virtual or in-person, five days a week. The hybrid model, oh, no, I read that. When will five days of in-person learning be considered? It's being done in other districts and in private schools, and it's going well. We need a choice to be able to send our kids to school safely, full-time. We are one of the best school districts. Our students are at a disadvantage, and so are parents trying to work full-time. Hybrid is not a long-term solution. Coming, coming back to our hybrid schedule has been successful so far. I think it's time to look into and start working on going back on a full-day schedule. Our kids have been great about wearing masks and know the precautions and dangers of preventing or catching COVID. I know that Bloomfield Hills schools will have a good protocol if this is the case. Catholic and private schools have been successful for it at two months now. Why can't we? I, I hope you can bring that up? Or not? I urge you to look into, urge you to look into and give, give us parents the choice to come full-day or virtual for those who are still apprehensive. It's not fair to hold our kids back for a few who want to stay home. We are aware of the dangers, willing to take them, take them for all of our mental and physical health sake. Thank you for your time. My sixth-grade son is high function, is, my sixth-grade son is high-functioning autistic and has ADHD. Wednesdays are basically no education for him at all. Being very rigid, being very rigid home is for playing, school is for work. We have multiple meltdowns trying to go through work that is asynchronous. He is capable to work alone, I have to support him while managing through back-to-back video conference calls. Today, I cried, I was unable to help him, and he was so overwhelmed by the work and couldn't do it. He is suffering with Mrs. McCullough, who heads special ed at BHMS sixth grade, and has mentioned this to me, as we both don't know what to do. He needs to be in school full-time. I don't understand how many other schools figured out how to go to school full-time. Troy, Claussen, et cetera, and Bloomfield does not. Wednesday deep cleaning day is basically a free day with little new school time, and the kids are only in school two hours a day, four days a week. We know the virus does not live long on services, so the deep clean days is not needed. You make half-days during, during the in-person day. The school district needs to step up and educate the children full-time at school. Please let the kids go to school full-time. I would like to thank you for your time and energy dedicated to coming up with a safe plan for the students in school. However, the current plan is not working. As far as receiving a quality education and a new plan to get the students in school full-time, those that want to meet should immediately be implemented. These kids are falling behind academically, and there's not been a steady rise in mental health issues since the pandemic began. These kids need structured, routine interactions with their peers and a meaningful education. Sadly, with the hybrid schooling, they're not receiving it. My middle schooler, she goes to school for three hours and then has two hours and 25 minutes of recess, as you would call it independent learning. Do you have any young kids at school? Can you get them to work having only two hours of free time? If she was actually in school, she would have a 20-minute lunch break for learning. Why is this such a long break? My high schooler, she is on her computer up in her room for six hours out of any social interaction. How is that healthy? Even when she attended school on Monday, when she was in class on Zoom. Isn't there a better and more effective way of in-person learning? While I understand in-person learning does not work for everyone, can you please explain to me why this board passed a plan that does not adequately, despite what the majority of parents voted for? Majority of parents voted for a full-time in-person learning, five days a week. Why isn't there a plan in place? Are you willing, are you waiting for a vaccine, waiting for COVID-19 to be gone? Even your own metric system has us on the path for in-person learning, five days a week, however, nothing has been mentioned. I can, I can keep going. Let me be clear. I think that teachers are doing a great job, what they have. I am impressed that all students are now able to participate in any class, either remotely or in-person. That being said, why can't there be five days a week of in-person learning for those that requested it, still while attending to the needs of those who choose online learning? And why isn't there any online learning classes on worthless Wednesdays? Indeed, the students are given busy work and are done by noon after waking up at 9:00 a.m. Bloomfield Hills prides itself on being one of the top schools in Michigan. This is the case, can you please explain why clocks in Novi, Northville, Troy, War Lake, as well as other private schools all have in-person learning and are making it work for their students? While I know you only read these comments out loud, I would like to make the above question. Part of the community was upset with the lack of classes initially offered for online learning. You listened to them and came up with a positive solution for online learning. Will you listen to the majority of parents who come up with a safe plan for a quality education and involves face-to-face, full-time? Then, when will the students be back for in-person learning? Full-time, five days a week? Thank you. Is that it, Dave? Or not? I have three children who attend BHS, two at Way Elementary, or one at BHMS. My neighbors' children attend St. Hugo of the Hills, a private school located in Bloomfield Hills. They open the doors five days a week, face-to-face learning in August, when school day was from eight to three. Class size is 20-plus students per class, and the school teacher kids in grades K through eight. They have only one confirmed case of COVID-19. The data of the neighboring schools shows that they are not spreading COVID-19. For the board members of Bloomfield Hills schools, please use your authority to open our schools for five days a week for face-to-face learning on facts, not continuing to keep them in a hybrid state based on fear. You owe it to the students and families your, your position serves. I won't go to specific details regarding the hybrid situation that BHS is currently doing, besides to say is absolutely not working. We need full face-to-face, five days a week. I would like, I would like to know what is the difference between the deep cleaning done on Wednesdays versus the deep cleaning? I'm concerned if you are releasing the significant chemicals into the air and surfaces throughout the day on Wednesdays, how it could affect our children's long-term health, increase the risk of cancers. Tomorrow, October 9th, movie theaters and, oh, tomorrow, October 9th, movie theaters and cinemas, bowling alleys, including climbing gyms, trampoline parks, arcades, bingo halls, and, and performance venues will reopen. This is great news and affects the steady decline in Michigan's COVID-19 cases. Now it is time for our schools. Hybrid learning is not as productive as in-person learning, considering the neighborhood private, public, and private schools have returned or plan to return to full-time for in-person instruction. It is time to return our students to their schools and classrooms full-time. It is my experience as a ta, as a taxpayer in Bloomfield Hills that a Bloomfield School District will open full-time, five days a week, face-to-face. Hybrid is not working. As I talk with other parents and hear of the numerous complaints and unhappiness of asynchronous Wednesdays and remote learning, I am relieved that I was able to get my daughter admitted to a private school. Prior to returning to school, five days with full-time, every student staff member was tested. Therefore, I knew we were sending our daughter into as safe as learning environment as possible during the time. Last semester, we were unhealthy and unproductive, and we were very fortunate we had been able to leave the district. I hope for the sake of the remaining children of Bloomfield Hills returns to full-time in-person learning. Asynchronous, wicked Wednesday, and hybrid, remote, half-day learning does not work for elementary-age children. My fourth-grade daughter spends more time crying and doing schoolwork from home. Bloomfield Hills students need to be back in traditional setting, full-time, five days a week, just as the private schools are in Bloomfield zip codes. Detroit Country Day, Brother Eyes, Marion Cranbrook, Academy of Sacred Heart, Bloomfield Christian, St. Hugo, St. Regis, Brookfield Academy, Our Shepherd Lutheran, and Holy, and Holy Name. I'm a parent of Bloomfield, I'm a parent of Bloomfield Hills students. I want the board to explicitly tell us when our students will go back to school, person, and full-time. Metrics and data support our students attending school in person, full-time. We have been in the yellow category for several months. Our kids have adapted to wearing face masks. Please do your part and tell us when the date, the date will be. I would like to invite each member of the board to my home on Wednesdays. You might be, you might as well add to the other four days a week in the morning, since we were a PM family in the hybrid model. You'll see for yourself that this hybrid day is not working. The kids are clearly not learning through a computer screen as much as they would if they were in-person, full-time at school. So, board members, please tell us the date and parameters as to when the kids will go back full-time. We are community observed, we are community deserved to know. Good evening, board members. I would like, I would like to know a discussion for five days and when it will be on the agenda at its time. While we are grateful for the hybrid program, it's not working. This is not the Bloomfield Hills education we know and have been promised. Let me be clear. This is not the fault of the teachers, since they have not dealt horrible cards and are doing the best they can. It is well-known if, that thousands of schools in the state and across the country have successfully been back to school for five full days a week for months now. We are all aware of every single private school, and our media area has also been back. Why, why do they get to go back and we don't? Optimal class sizes have always been a selling point to our district, and we pride ourselves on that. Given the current in-person numbers, our classroom sizes are similar, if not equal, to those in our neighboring private schools. Therefore, this cannot be the argument. Our students are only receiving 14 hours of in-person instruction per week. This is terrifying. We do not allow this to continue as the rest of the school year. When they are not in school, the asynchronous work is busy work and involves very little critical thinking skills. Wednesdays specifically concerning as this, as there is very little teacher contact, and it feels like either a day off for some or overwhelming day with excessive amount of meaningless work except to be done independently with no support. The inconsistencies across the district and within the school needs to be addressed immediately. Our children should not be punished any longer. Our students are being forced to learn material completely on their own when we have enough. We are losing our children and their love for school. Why are the survey the parents and student input? We have seen nothing since December. It's time to ask the community how things are going. Where is our voice? Your fault, you are failing our students, and you do not deserve this. We are no, we are no longer in this together. We are watching students all over the state and country get in-sound person education while our children are falling behind. They have too much time at home. The Virtual Academy has been created for K through 5 and 6 through 12 students, remote, and 6 through 12 students can remote into their classes whenever they need to. It is now time to give the option of five full back days. Thank you for your time. And I assume that's it? Okay? With that, we have board business. We have one thing for board business. We have a resolution. Do we have a motion?
I move the Board of Education adopt the resolution ratifying and confirming prior Board of Education approvals as presented.
Do I have support?
Second.
Before we have discussion, I'd like to invite Mr. Crowley to come, talk a little bit about the resolution.
We have our bond deal, which was approved by the voters in August. This board approved the issuance of the bonds in August, and we've been working on issuing the bonds. On October 1, there was an offer by the underwriter to buy the bonds at a very, very low interest rate. The market is, you know, you probably all know the interest rate environment currently is very, very favorable to bond issuers. And then, we're scheduled to close on the bonds next, next Thursday, October 15. And as you're aware, the Supreme Court, the state of Michigan, came out with an opinion on Friday, basically invalidating all the governor's emergency orders that she has issued since, after April 30th. So, the bond resolution that we passed authorizing the issuance of the bonds was held at a remote meeting. And with the Supreme Court decision, this puts into question whether the bond issuance was officially authorized. So, in, with an abundance of caution, we requested, and we appreciate this board meeting in person, to ratify the actions of approving that bond issue. What we've also done in the resolution, just because we're meeting today, is to also ratify all your actions that you've taken place after April 30th, in case that ever is needed. The good news is the Senate met today, and they introduced the bill, Senate Bill 1108, which amends the Open Meetings Act, and it's gonna provide a fix, depending on what the House does with it, should provide a fix to this, and hopefully by next week, this problem should go away, hopefully. The Senate passed the, the bill today, and it's off to the House. I understand the House is gonna be in session tomorrow, and the plan is that hopefully this will be on the governor's desk next week. We've asked you to come today because our closing's next Thursday. We just don't want any hiccups in the, in the process as we go along. As far as tonight's meeting, we're absolutely fine with a hybrid, as long as you have in-person public comment available. You are actually expanding the rights of participants. So, our opinion is that you're totally fine, and this would not be subject to challenge. You've actually expanded the rights of people to participate. So, we don't think that this could be challenged under the Open Meetings Act. So, as long as you're here with a quorum, the members of the board who are not here cannot vote, and you are here in person. We have public comment, we have virtual comment, so we are totally fine with the, with the way this meeting is set up.
One question, Jim. Am I only gonna have the people that are here live vote, and the people that are virtual not vote on this?
You're fine, as long as the four who vote yes are, I mean, as long as it passed by, the folks are here, I don't care if they wanna vote remotely, as long as the majority is here.
Yeah. Jim, my understanding is that boards can vote whether to allow remote voting from board members that may not be present.
No, we, we don't think that, that they can allow that. Some, some attorneys think, legal counsel think that by board policy, you can do that. We just don't think that that's currently allowed under the Open Meetings Act.
All right. So, the, the two board members that aren't present in person won't be able to vote on this particular?
I don't, I don't care if they vote or not. I mean, as long as we have four here that pass.
I know, I'm thinking in the future, if we have three and four at home, or something like that.
This legislation's gonna take care of that problem.
Yeah, okay.
They are, under the, the Senate Bill 1108, they are gonna allow for a board member to vote remotely, and it's clearly in there. So, that, that should just all by next week.
So, the last few days have been an intense source of confusion, and from a non-legal person, I was just, a point of curiosity as to what was the state Supreme Court hoping to accomplish by doing the invalidation of all the executive orders?
Well, interestingly, there was multiple challenges by various groups. This one, interestingly, came from a group of healthcare professionals who were upset that, that they couldn't do non-essential procedures. And so, this group of doctors and.
If you wanna take the phone again and.
Whatever the surgery was, sued, and they sued in federal court, and the federal court sent it to the state Supreme Court. And the state Supreme Court said two things. There was two different acts that they were relying, the 1976 Emergency Act, which allows the governor to declare a state of emergency for 28 days, and then that can be extended only with the legislature's approval. Well, the legislature did approve the extension, but they only extended it through April 30th. The other act goes back to 1940s, and doesn't have any time limit, and, and the thought there that that was really for something for more like riots and civil unrest. And so, the Supreme Court ruled unanimously that the 76 Act can't go, the governor cannot let that go more than 28 days without legislative approval. That's how we get to the April 30th date. And then they just said that the 1940 Act was unconstitutional, where they threw that one out, and that was on a four-three vote. First, the 76 was on a seven-zero vote, so.
Any other questions? I don't see any. We have a motion and a second, so I'm gonna follow. I'll start with people here. Howard?
Aye.
Mark?
Jennifer?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Amy?
Sedia?
Abby?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven oh. Motion passes here, five oh. Thank you very much. We will move on. Thanks, Jim. We will move on to general discussion, COVID-19 update. Pat?
Thank you. So, good evening, everyone. Looking forward to the COVID update for October 8th, 2020. So, David, if we can get to the weekly 19 report from Oakland County Health Division for the reporting period, September 23 to October 6. So, everything is pretty similar to the last report that Oakland County sent out with the update. A couple things in the age group, five to nine, 10 to 13, and 14 to 18. We've seen the trend go down, not significantly since last time, but definitely trending down. The big group that we saw bump in this time is the age group of 40 to 49. Next slide, looking at the dashboard, new cases for 100,000. That's remained stable and continues to go down. You can see when we had that big spike between early July started and really peaked in the middle of August, but we've been in yellow for 110, 110 days now. And then for the percent positive data, again, it's been fairly stable. We had a couple spikes. One was going to be the August spike, and then another one that took place right about 9, 10, 9, 11, 9, 12. But right now, it's currently stable. So, we're 18 days in yellow there, but with the three-day lag, and looking at the data coming in so far now, we'll probably have those 21, 22 days in counting, starting next week and this weekend. Next slide. So, recently, Brown University, working with AASA, came out with a national data dashboard. As of now, and they've surveyed districts from across the United States. So far, the results also showed low levels of infection among students and teachers, and it indicates that school transmission. And it indicates that school transmission is much lower than anticipated. Also, just found out this afternoon that the Oakland County Health Division has created a hotline for parents. And so we'll have information about that out, if not tomorrow, early next week. It'll be from 5:00 AM to 8:00 AM that parents can call and speak to someone from the Oakland County Health Division. And then ask them questions about quarantining, ask them questions about COVID, and have the ability to have someone on call, just someone they can talk to before they decide whether or not their child should go to school for that day. Next slide, David. And so that is the end of our COVID data update for this study session. Thank you.
Okay, and Cynthia and Jackie, if you have a question, just put in the chat, because I can't see your faces right now on the screen and from board members. But I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Thanks for the update. So one question is, so if the data trend continues the way it is, yellow where we are for at least 21 days, and the metrics show us to continue hybrid, and a full return, is that the case based on the metrics?
So if we have 21 days in both positive case rate in 21 days and case rate and the positivity rate, then we can keep with hybrid, we can also consider full in person. So I do fully anticipate to get to those 21 days with the three-day lag tomorrow, this weekend. That's what is trending right now, so it's definitely something that we can consider.
So maybe at the next Board of Education meeting, you can kind of give us like, sort of like, you know, what is the plan is, the ultimate plan, you know, in terms of readiness and what we need to do, if possible, down the road to go back full-time?
Absolutely. So, you know, we've been kind of, and Todd, and his LST team has already taken this type of stuff on. So we're planning three ways. One, we're planning for what we're doing right now. They've also been planning forward, and part of planning forward is looking for the readiness and challenges of going back. We'll see in the board update that Kelly put in there information about staffing. You know, there are definitely staff needs we have. We're also planning backwards. You know, we do need to keep in mind, depending on what model you're looking at, that COVID could spike. Do we know? We have no idea. So if we have to go back and return to page three, because I was informed today that the pages are still into effect. Hopefully that was a cross-information received, we'll go back to page three, then we need to shut everything down and go remote. For hybrid right now, we're trying to build out, you heard some comments about the Wednesdays and the sickness time. Remember, teachers have been planning for one model, now they're planning for another model. It's like the unbelievable lift that's being expected of the teachers right now. But yes, those challenges and those things that, you know, we need to look at, we definitely can work with the team and have that presented at the next Board of Education meeting for sure.
Yeah, because when, in a previous meeting, you presented, you know, what was the timeline for hybrid? So maybe at the next board meeting, you can present whatever the timeline is for like a full return. Is that possible?
Yep, we can get with the team and definitely have that proposed timelines. Again, I'm going to give the caveat, it depends on the data, right? You know, are we seeing a spike in the case rate, or are we seeing a spike rate in positivity? Do we have clusters that have taken place? And I know there's debate about what equals a cluster, because what Michigan describes as a cluster is different with some other states do. But yeah, we can definitely have that ready at the next board meeting on the 22nd and have a timeline laid out potentially, depending on, you know, how the numbers are and things like that. That's something the team can definitely do.
Thanks, Howard.
Okay, I'm just following up on President Cohen. Sorry. So we talked about the next board meeting, which is on the 22nd. There is nothing precluding the administration and the president of calling a special meeting if administration thinks you need to have a different timing other than on our regular two-week schedule. Is that correct?
That is correct. But part of what I kind of already said is looking at the readiness and the challenges, which is something that has already been done and is continuing to work on. So there's a lot of components that have to go in before we can propose a timeline. It'd be easy for us to say, hey, November 4th, November 22nd, here's what we're going to do. The devil, as I said before, is in the details. So it's not like I'm hearing this from President Cohen, it's like, okay, we'll start looking at that. Todd and his team has already been looking at, okay, what are the next steps we would have to take? And unfortunately, the planning takes a little while to make sure we can do everything we need.
I just want to make absolutely sure that it's not the board that's constraining this and that obviously there's a whole bunch of details that have to work out. But, you know, we're here at your disposal, whenever you would need us here, we're here.
I appreciate it. And the first thing that needs to happen is we need to get to 21 days in both categories. And it very much looks like we're going to do that, it comes to that either tomorrow or Saturday. I think we're 20, maybe it's 19 today, because we are accounting for the three-day lag. And, you know, if you look at what we did with the metrics, very similar to what Oakland County Health Division put out, very similar to what the CDC put out. And then if you look at the COVID tracker we're using, now you'll see a lot of other districts using it. You know, Metro Biggerone's picked it up, Netrix is great helping us with that. So we're trying to do our due diligence and make sure we find as much information as we can about what's going on, because it changes so often. You know, the CDC just recently updated what they were saying about COVID-19, that we know it definitely is not just spread in the air, but it might linger in the air longer than we thought, potentially. And that the heavier the droplets, the quicker they're able to fall to the ground because of gravity. And the more it spreads out, the difference in potentially the viral load. I was on another meeting today, they're talking about Michigan, they believe there's two different strands of COVID-19, potentially. So it constantly changes. I've been tasked with, and I've expressed myself, is to spend hours reading COVID information over and over and over. And when I do that, I think, Trustee Cook, you were in the one meeting where I was talking about COVID. Hopefully it was obvious that I'm reading as much as I can. Right there with the professionals, and I'm definitely not a professional. But I will stay on top of it and make sure I'm doing my due diligence and bringing information back as well.
Thank you, Dr. Watson.
Out of all that, well, thank you, Trustee. And again, let's remember, there is no good answer with everything that's going on. And I get the first frustration, you know, I'm a parent myself. I see your daughter sitting at home wondering different things. And she goes to a school with 6,500 kids in one campus in three buildings. And as a parent, we've heard nothing. We don't know if there is a plan, whether anything's going to be announced or anything like that. So I get the frustration. And we'll keep working to meet the needs of our students. And I know everyone wishes it could be faster and we could just snap a finger. But I'm going to say I'm extremely proud of the teachers, of the whole team for putting together the way we came back as a phase-in model. Because what we're doing right now is we're seeing where our protocols work, our procedures working. Are we having piercings in those protocols procedures? And if we are, how do we close those gaps? Because right now, if you have a COVID-positive student, and we've social distanced, one person's going home. Instead of maybe 10, maybe a building closing, maybe the whole class. But there's a lot of considerations. And I can tell you, we're continually having meetings, but we need to adjust this, we need to adjust that. I show up at the high school, one of the first days back, where's Mr. Holloway? He's protecting the bathroom during lunch to limit the amount of students that are going in and out of the bathroom at a time. So they're spaced properly if they're in the restroom. I mean, so we need to look at those additional details, because if you're going to do it, you're going to want to do it right. And if you don't have time to do it right, when do you have time to do it over? And this is not a situation where you don't want to think as many things you can and make a mistake, because you may not get the opportunity to do it over. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. I don't see anything in the chat. Does anyone here have any other?
So, Pat, if I'm a parent, trying to sense of this at home, tomorrow will be one week that the students have been in under this hybrid plan. 21 days is two more weeks. At day 21, we're having another board meeting to discuss numbers and bringing students back. Is there anything between the hybrid plan we have right now and full day, five days a week, full-time? Or is it this to full-time? There's no like phase two?
There's not a phase two I can think of, but at the moment. But I can see us potentially facing students and kind of like this, maybe looking at K through A. We don't have the luxury that some districts do and say, you know, we'll bring back K through 5. You know, people are giving other districts, you know, like this district is bringing everyone back. Well, no, they're bringing back 6 through 12 hybrid. Or this district is bringing everyone back K through 5. Current, 55% of their kids are staying home, they're bringing back 25%. So there is a lot of movement right now in Oakland County with students potentially coming back under different models and different dates. So we need to look at what would make the most sense for us. But K through 8 would have to most likely stay as a group together because of our building configurations, we would not be able to break them off.
Okay, so best-case scenario, and the numbers stay steady or get better, we meet, and it's any plan on the table. It could be increasing the amount of days and decreasing the social distancing while in face-to-face. It could be no social distancing and back 100%. We have Is there any way we can be a little bit more definitive for parents? I mean, they're just clamoring for some kind of answers.
Yeah, so the request from President Cohen was to come back to that next board meeting on the 22nd, I believe it is, and talk about the readiness and challenges of bringing everyone back. So that would be five days a week. Now, is that K through 8? Is that K through 12? Is it just 9, 12? Is it just K8? That's part of that planning that's already started with readiness, for example. Are we going to have the bus drivers that we need to do it currently? Because we're hiring for bus drivers, we're hiring for custodians, we're hiring for parents, we're hiring for teachers, we're hiring for EnviroClean. Right? Are we going to be able to do all those different things? We don't have all those answers right now. And again, this is President Cohen saying to me, hey, have you guys thought about this? Maybe you should take a look at it. That work started already. You know, all the building administrators have already weighed in, starting last Friday, and then following up on Monday throughout this week, of readiness and challenges if we were to go back full-time. And so now we've got to continue to work to, what are those challenges? Where are we not ready? And then looking at our protocols with Leonard and then with our nurse Debbie, where are there gaps in our system? One of the things we worked on, spent a lot of time working on the past couple of days, and Shear's been working on with Leonard and Debbie, and Mary Hillberry's been involved in the meetings, the whole screener thing. How do we really simplify it and make it easier? And then with the whole runny nose, we pulled out of Toronto Public Schools in Canada their verbiage for how they're going about advising people when it comes to that. Because I know I have allergies, I could have runny nose every day. But do you have two or more symptoms, right, that maybe go along with it? So the planning is what takes so much time. That's why you see, and I get people are excited, oh, this district's coming back. Right, they've been planning since August, they're just coming back now. Tomorrow is our first full week of the high school back. And we've phased in nicely, little by little by little. And we've learned something every day along the way that will help it make us better and safer if we are able to go back and have everyone back full-time. The learning curve has been great.
Any other questions or comments? Cynthia?
Yes, so just for clarity, we are in hybrid, so that we do not have the density.
Cynthia, you're on mute.
I can hear.
I can hear.
Can you hear me now?
No, I heard you the first time. For clarity, right now we're in hybrid. I heard you crystal clear.
Thank you. So if we were to bring everybody back face-to-face, five days a week, we have a certain number of our students who are in the virtual academy, would we be able to have six-foot spacing for kids in all of our classes?
We would not. I can answer that already, because already the building administrators have weighed in. We would not be able to have six feet in every class. It ranged anywhere from two and a half feet to six feet, depending on the building and the class. And that's been confirmed by building, I know Nick Russo was nice enough to start measuring for me. I've talked to Charlie, I've talked to Jenny Eck, we would not be, two to six feet would be the range.
So for schools that have already gone back face-to-face, are they doing six feet? Are they, is it a difference in that they have different enrollment than we do?
For some, it is. For others, they've gone back less than six feet, and that includes some of the I've been looking at the data coming out of Livingston County. The reason I've selected to look at the data, amongst other places, out of Livingston County, is because the majority of their school districts have gone back full face-to-face with different amounts of social distancing. They definitely have some cases of COVID. All along, we've known that we're not going to be able to keep COVID out of the schools. But one of the main goals has been to mitigate it as much as possible.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, we will move on to return-to-school update.
All right, great. I will turn it over to Todd and the LST team. Thank you. Hi, Todd.
Good evening, Pat and Board of Education. We do have a presentation here. We're going to allow, as you see on the screen, we have many of our teachers here and our building admin. And we're going to go ahead and kind of move throughout the evening and really kind of lift up some of those stories. There's a lot of pictures too as well, because it's hard to get in and out of the buildings right now unless you're a teacher, administrator. So this way it will kind of give you a view into what those classrooms look like and some of the challenges that our teachers are facing. This is certainly not easy, but yet within that, you know, there's absolutely some remarkable stories of the challenges that our teachers are taking on and how they're moving throughout the instruction to be able to connect with kids. So we're going to take a moment to kind of go through that. And I think first up is probably elementary, and I think Nick was going to present with a couple of his teachers. Am I going in the right order? Nick?
Early reading skills, sound identification in words, things like that. And because of masks too, you know, students learning the effect and nuances of conversations continues to be challenged because they can't see our facial features as we're talking through lessons and things like that. Nor can we see theirs when they're either having a problem or a celebration in the classroom too. So funny story is, you know, a student was happy about something, but it kind of looked like she was crying at the same time. And we had to say like, are you, are you crying? Is everything okay? And it turned out everything was great and fine, but because her, the bottom half of her face was covered, we just couldn't tell. So, yeah, I'll pass it off to my other counterparts here.
Hi, my name is Jamie Reedholm, and I teach fourth grade. Another challenge that we are kind of working through is that because our time with our kids is so condensed, it kind of makes our day a little bit more robotic or rigid, where it's like, all right, we have to do this, and then we're going to work through this, and then we're going to move on to the next subject. It's kind of just quick, 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 quick. And we were kind of talking about some of the things that we miss, like hearing our kids' voices on the morning announcements or getting to go to an assembly together or having our parents come into the classroom to do an activity with us. And that kind of leads us into our next challenge, which is Um, and that kind of leads us into our next challenge, which is, um, kind of the struggle to do collaborative work when we are maintaining social distancing where. Have a chat with your partner or sit hip to hip and read this book together. That can't really happen in the same way. So we're having to think creatively in ways that we can have our kids collaborate.
All right, can you guys hear me? Okay, so, um, I'm Caitlin Bowler, and I teach second grade at Conan. So a few more of our, uh, things that were challenges for us is some of the accountability with the at-home work time. So especially for younger students, if they don't have parents or someone accompanying them at home. It's really a struggle for them to get some things done, and therefore it can be hard to hold kids accountable whether or not they do the work because it's really whether or not they're having support at home. Another thing is, as elementary teachers, we're constantly roaming around the classroom, looking at the work that students are doing as they're doing it. And when students are working the second half of the day at home. We're really not able to do that. So for example, I sent home a review for a math test yesterday. And the students did it all independently, and I'm not able to give them any corrective feedback until they get here the next day, which they could have. Potentially done the whole entire thing incorrectly independently if they weren't having any support. And another challenge is just the workload balance for teachers. So generally, we're able to. Kind of give kids feedback with things as they go where now we're having to. Wait until the whole entire day is over. So for example, I can't really check my email until the end of the day. So kids maybe have been emailing me all day asking for support. Asking for help, asking questions, and I can't do that until the end of the day or the next morning. Also, it's a challenge just the many different, I've Pat mentioned earlier, just. Teaching virtually, teaching on Wednesdays, kind of a hybrid model, teaching at school, just balancing for teachers, all of the different ways like. I think about for kids that are going to work on things on Monday, you have to remember for some kids to send it home like on Thursday afternoon, some kids you have to send it on Friday morning. So it's just a lot for teachers to balance and remember. And then finally, um, just with anything balancing the tech challenges that we're having with some of the kids.
Is that going back to Pat?
Next slide.
So some things that we've noticed that are, um. Positive is that a lot of our students are learning how to navigate Zoom and, um, all of the technology. Uh, outputs that we ask them to do. We see children muting themselves appropriately during class discussions and unmuting themselves and raising their hand on Zoom. To ask a question. And it's just really cool to see them able to, um, handle that in an adult-like way. Um, and that the students have really adapted so well to the new norms of conduct. Um, at the elementary level, there really aren't a lot of, um, problems asking students to wear their masks properly. Having students fix their masks, um, being able to put their own masks on from what we've seen. Um, in our experience either. Um. And the students have really risen to the occasion for the, uh, what we're asking them. For the content. It feels like they're doing a nice job with that.
Hi Caitlin, I think you're on mute.
Oh, sorry, I was pressing mute and I think somebody else was pressing it. Sorry, can you guys hear me? Thanks. So just building on what Mallory was saying, I think the kids are really excited to be at school. And even though it is really condensed in a lot, um, in a little bit of time. I think the kids come in ready to work and we've scheduled some breaks in, but there will be times, you know, I look up and I realize it's eleven thirty and we haven't taken a break. The kids are really ready to go from like. Math to reading to writing. They're ready to learn and they know that it's important, like, since we just have a little bit of time together each day, that they've really risen to the occasion when normally. We, you know, have more breaks in the day, or we have lunch, or we have snack. Kids aren't like, when's the time to eat? Or do we have recess? They're really. Focused on their work and ready to learn. Something that's become really apparent, um, in all of the different models that we have going at once is that. We've really started teaching some of the executive functioning skills to kids, their independence, their responsibility. So every day as kids start to leave, they have to think about like. I'm not going to be here until tomorrow, but in between that time, I have to work on work at home. I'm going to have a meeting with my specials teacher. And so they're really working with some of the adult style executive functioning skills, thinking about what it is that they need to do. And they're really learning that being irresponsible or leaving things at home or not bringing things in advance means that. They're going to have half a day at school at home that they're not prepared for.
All right, some other wins, um, connected to what has been going well lately. Has been like a school-wide and district-wide renewed focus on social emotional learning. It has been just a necessity to really focus on that in our morning meetings and then woven throughout the day too. And. There's another bullet down there that says that students have been really open about sharing their feelings during the SEL check-ins. Which has made this time together really positive and really productive. And kind of related to that too. Is that with the hybrid model, our class sizes are really small. So we can really get to know each other. The kids can really get to know their teacher and we're like a little family. Um, that goes throughout the day together. So that has been really nice. And then smiling faces, just we've settled into the routines really well as, um, both Caitlin and Mallory have shared, and families have been really supportive. Um, and Ms. Russo, do you have anything else that you want to add?
Just, just, uh, I think in the past couple of days, can you hear me? Yeah, so I, I think in the past couple of days, one thing that, uh, has kind of been a change from. From what we were seeing in the first, first couple of weeks is that families are really starting to feel the. The realness where the rubber is meeting the road on when the student has a couple of the symptoms that that are COVID-like. Um, it's, it's, it's difficult to navigate as a, as a parent, as an educator for the whole thing and knowing when. You know, what, what are the rules about coming back? What does that look like? Um, and, and I can speak to it as a parent. I had the same situation with one of my children. I had to get him to the doctor right away, had to have an alternate diagnosis and, and, and. I think that's just starting to really come to the, the cream is rising to the top where parents are starting to feel that they say, oh, um. Oh, my child has the sniffles and a sore throat, and I have to go through all of this in order to bring the kid back. And, um, I think it's just they're starting to see what a, what a challenge it really is. And that would conclude the elementary presentation, I believe.
Okay, and I'll ask, I'll ask my colleagues just away to the end for questions or comments. So Pat, is there, you want to go to the middle square?
Yeah, we'll keep going. We've got a few slides left, so we'll keep going.
Good evening. I hope everyone can hear me. Good evening, Board of Education. It's so nice to be here this evening to share a little bit about Bloomfield Virtual. And give you kind of a window, a snapshot into how things are going on the other side of the screens at Bloomfield Virtual. And I have two teachers joining me this evening. I think one of the greatest gifts at Bloomfield Virtual is that we have the. Expertise and strength of staff from seven different school buildings, and that's really remarkable. And they have been phenomenal in terms of. Coming together as teams and learning from one another and, and we're really learning the best of all of the, the schools across our system, which has been really exciting. So to talk to you a little bit this evening, Kelly Hooton is joining us. She teaches ARP at Bloomfield Virtual. And Denise Dickey, who teaches third grade at Bloomfield Virtual. And Denise is going to start us off.
Hi, everyone. I hope you.
Denise, I'm wondering if you have two devices on.
I don't.
Okay. Go ahead and start. And Denise, you can see if your sound clears up.
Will do. Okay, can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Kelly.
All right, good. Good evening. Um, I'm the teacher of the virtual elementary academic resource program and the functional resource program. I just want to share how kids who are part of a special education program are participating in the virtual platform. First of all, we have a fantastic para educator for our classroom, Ms. Lisa Wade. She is also a certified teacher, and we have thirteen great students. The motto of our classroom is low technology and high learning. So how does that happen in the virtual platform? All of our students have two classrooms, the grade level classroom and our special education classroom. Students attend both settings based on their individual needs through their IEP. Ms. Lisa supports our children in the larger classrooms by joining breakout rooms or moving kids to her Zoom link for additional learning. At the same time, I meet with kids individually and in small groups to provide academic intervention. We strongly believe in teaching to the whole child, since we also focus on executive functioning skills, motor planning, and sensory integration. The greatest surprise to this learning platform has been the relationships developed with our students and families. Our family's support has been exceptional. Parents, grandparents, or siblings are often sitting close to the student during each lesson to help students learn through guided modeling. We have experienced rising confidence in creating individual learning programs for each child based on their instructional level. For those students who need hands-on programming instead of virtual, which is many of our children. We make learning bins where we provide two weeks' worth of lessons in all subject areas as well as sensory activities. The bins are dropped off at the student's designated school, where parents then pick up their child's two weeks' worth of instruction. The bins are dropped off at the end of two weeks to be refilled. We use the materials in our student bins for our learning sessions. The greatest challenge has been building thirteen daily student schedules. We work with eight grade level teacher schedules as well as creative art teachers and ancillary services. So it's been a bit of a puzzle making all of this work, but each week it's getting a little bit easier. So we are having a great time building this program and implementing that. The partnership we have with the families is everything, but best of all. We really think the kids are having fun and they're all learning.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
Want to see if the mic's working on the other presenter, Jen?
Yes.
Hey, hi, I'm Denise.
Much better, Denise, that's great.
Better? Good, two thumbs up. I teach third grade and my home base is Lone Pine, but this year I have a new teaching assignment in Bloomfield Virtual. And I would love to share three small moments with you. First, a surprise moment, and next, a confident moment, and yes, even a moment that may be a little bit challenging at times. Good things are happening in Bloomfield Virtual. Initially, while taking on this adventure, I thought it may be a very singular position and I would be largely isolated and on my own. But to, to my surprise and delight, online teaching has opened up doors to foster new relationships among many talented colleagues within our district. We have provided encouragement and support for one another and have become stronger and more effective educators as a result of our partnerships. Now for a confident moment. Fortunately, our district had prioritized a core curriculum in all academic subject areas that was already in place for K through five long before COVID nineteen. It's been an exciting journey to discover creative ways to enhance these academic programs through the use of technology. Interactive tools such as Bitmoji theme libraries, virtual field trips, animated timers, flipgrid videos, Google Classroom, and even the Open Book Project that provides fun and engaging lessons about our world. Are all available with a mere click of a mouse. These tools engage students' natural curiosities and foster unique opportunities for discussion and authentic learning. This gives me and the families I serve the confidence to know that my students are acquiring the necessary skills they will need to be successful leaders in third grade and beyond. And lastly, a challenging moment. At the close of every day. Our entire class reaches their arms toward the camera and with gusto shout, be all in. This is our motto that we have lived since the very first day of school. We've talked about what it sounds like and what it looks like and what it feels like to be all in. The biggest challenge is ensuring that every student is engaged in the learning process. This is not always an easy endeavor as there are many distractions that can take their focus. So we partner together as a team to keep each other accountable and continue to remind each other to be all in. Thanks for listening from a teacher's perspective.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Kelly and Denise. They, I, they said it well. I, I have nothing else to add. Thank you so much for having us here.
Thanks, Jen. I'll pass it back to Pat.
We'll keep going with the presentation.
Good evening. I am here to represent Wing Lake, and I have this evening with me Sue Fork, our school nurse, and Stephanie Colombo, who is our elementary SXI teacher. Sue's going to talk a little bit about what is going well with our back to school at Wing Lake.
Hey, can everybody hear me okay? Okay, um. First and foremost is the enthusiasm of the staff and the students to be back in the building. Uh, we are staffer truly appreciate all the PPE providers, especially since Wing Lake's students population is the most medically fragile in our district. And the majority of our students can't not wear masks. So staff has made social stories and videos about wearing masks and PPE to share with students prior to the first day. So students are quickly adapting, um, to staff wearing the PPE. One story is we had one little boy, he was very, very upset seeing us in masks the first day, the second day, he came in all smiles. So. Um, our hybrid schedule is going well. Um, it helps to keep the students and staff safe. Uh, with more physical space, we can assist the students better in. Feeding, toileting, and we can provide more social distance, um, for them also. Arrival and dismissal procedures with temperature taking and green screen checking by Wing Lake staff or resident bus driver. Bus drivers is going well, and these extra precautions help staff and families to feel more comfortable with in-person learning. Uh, staff are cleaning students' hands and equipment prior to coming in the building. Once students are off the bus, they are coh- co-horted and remain only with their classmates and staff throughout the day. And that physical space really helps us being able to spread them out. Uh, we started small. Um, some parents had a wait-and-see philosophy. But some classrooms had a few students the first week and with, and more intended in the following weeks. As parents felt more comfortable with all the safety precautions, uh, we have put in place.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Colombo. I'm an SXI teacher, which is severe multiple impairment, um, in an elementary classroom. I'm going to talk a little bit about where we see levels of confidence rising in our teaching and learning at Wing Lake. First and foremost, definitely technology integration. We've used Google Classroom, and this has been beneficial for families and staff because we are able to put our lessons, our resources. And any classroom materials in one spot and they can just find it in one area instead of a, a lot of different links. Second, um, our families that attend consistently for our virtual sessions are getting a better idea of what it might look like in the classroom or what it does look like in the classroom. Um, so then they can work better with their child to engage them and use core vocabulary because that's our main, um, source of language. Also, increased collaboration among our grade levels and even all of the teachers. We share just about everything. And we're developing our materials and our lessons. And that's about all I have, Rebecca.
Okay, next slide. So in the middle of this slide, there's an example of the social story that actually Stephanie and her staff made that was sent out to students so that they could. Know what to expect coming back to school. One of the amazing things that we did is the Thursday before we brought students back. Leonard Sanford and Debbie Glazer came out along with, um, and we, along with physical plant services. So Brian was there, Ken was there. And we walked classroom to classroom and discussed what every day was going to look like for the students and the staff. And that was really helpful to talk through different scenarios. The way that desks and tables were set, um, set up. And so we really appreciated that opportunity. The bottom middle picture here is actually a picture of our students who are in distance learning. And so as we're in the hybrid model, we have students who are in the building two days a week. a week, though we have some students that have selected to stay home all of the time. And then the other three days a week, the students are home with their classmates. So where are some challenges? So one of our challenges has actually been staffing, and here's what I want to say to that. The hybrid model is working, but I cannot imagine starting in any other way. And why is that? With this model, we are able to socially distance students as much as possible. We're able to individualize feeding and toileting needs where before we would have to feed, for example, two to three students sometimes per one staff member. Now we're doing feeding, toileting, those daily living skills are really one-to-one. Our staff have been going above and beyond. They are being very flexible, especially our instructional assistants who are assisting in many classrooms. They have schedules, so everyone knows where they're working each and every day. But there have been times that we've had to pull staff to assist in other rooms. So the hybrid model allows us to staff appropriately, and we've added staff to each classroom on in-person days so that we can best meet each student's needs. Another challenge is continuing to engage and increase participation of students who have opted to remain home for right now. So we're working really hard to do that. The teachers have been doing amazing work in their multiple new roles. At Wing Lake, we're running one schedule, so our classroom teachers are virtual teachers and they're in-person teachers. And while that's really overwhelming, they are working really hard to keep students engaged and increase participation more and more every week. We are still passing out Chromebooks. I delivered four today to homes. And making sure students have their one-to-one technology has been a challenge, but it's something that we're definitely working on. And so, you know, again, our staff are working multiple hours and going above and beyond to meet the individual needs of our students. And we are continuing to encourage families to be aware of both district and school communications. So we are off to a great start, and I think for us, like I said, I cannot imagine having started in any other way. And, you know, I've heard the public comments. I know at Wing Lake, we are a very unique program, and we do have the most medically fragile students. And students, again, where 95% of our students are unable to wear masks. And so as we look to forward, I just want to definitely keep in mind the things that are working for us right now. So thanks for listening to How Things Are Going at Wing Lake.
Thank you. Pass it back to Pat.
Okay. We'll keep going. Middle schools up next.
All right. So thank you to Pat and our board for giving us this opportunity to talk tonight. I also wanted to take an opportunity to thank our middle school teams. Our West Hills administrative team, Rob Direka, Andy Geniak, the counselors and staff over there, East Hills, Jason Rubel, Angie Konzen, counselors and staff over there, Harleen Singh over at BHMS, our counselors and staff. It definitely takes a huge team effort. This is a unique school year, and like I said, it takes a team to be able to maneuver through it all. Wanted to thank Mike Masucci. He's with us here tonight, eighth-grade U.S. history teacher and ELA teacher over at East Hills. Had the opportunity to teach with Mike when I was over there as a sixth-grade teacher and associate principal. And also Beth Mueller, a special education teacher over at West Hills. Had the pleasure of working with Beth on several committees, including one called Moonshot Thinking. So the first task for us was really talking through some of the challenges that we've been presented with or the things that we've been able to persevere through. And, you know, the first thing that came to mind for me was just maintaining relationships and maintaining collaboration. If you take a look at some of the pictures that we have here, we're showing our students where they are spaced out. There's distance learning, there's Zoom calls, there's students that are, you know, coming in with backpacks and their masks on. But it's not the unique, it's not the traditional setting that we're used to. By all means, you know, we're making this work and we're giving our students a great learning experience every single day, but we want to see our kids together. That's the challenge. We want to see them in the hallways. We want to see them in the classrooms. We want to see them in the lunchrooms. We want to see them at recess time. We want to see them on the sports fields, and we want to see them in clubs. So we're moving in a direction where we can safely make the adjustments to get our kids where we need to, but it's going to take time. So that is one of the challenges that we're slowly working through. But maintaining relationships and building that camaraderie amongst our students is something that we definitely are trying to persevere through and maintain in all of our buildings. I know Beth and Mike wanted to share a few things, their perspectives from West Hills and East Hills. Beth, why don't we start with you?
Okay. Thanks for having us this evening. I would say that along with what Randy just shared regarding relationships, one of the biggest challenges that we have faced as I talk to staff and parents and students is just navigating the transition between the different schedules. And a big piece of that has been the communication. I know that parents have shared that the communication is sometimes confusing as we change different schedules on them and ask them to meet at different times and have their students online at different times. So just navigating that and helping students and parents through that to reduce the anxiety that they're feeling. I know our staff has worked really hard to communicate with families, but that has been one of the biggest challenges we faced as a special ed teacher and talking to the special ed staff and other support staffs in the buildings. Scheduling special services in has also been something that we've had to really be flexible about and kind of think outside the box and look for different ways to provide those supports that students with IEPs and 504s are used to receiving. And I'm going to turn it over to Mike.
And I'm happy to join this meeting. With respect to challenges, you know, one thing that I see is tempo. It's a really fast-paced day from, you know, 8:15 all the way up to 3 o'clock. In particular, those transition times where you move content to content. For example, a student goes from social studies to English. You know, in sixth and seventh grade, you have teachers moving, they're gathering their stuff, they're, you know, on the move to the next class. In eighth grade, you have students moving from class to class. So you have teachers cleaning desks, you know, keeping kids social distance. It's like a NASCAR pit crew, you know what I mean? People are moving fast, and it's an up, you know, tempo game. Just a quick anecdote, last week, I said to a colleague, I said, "Have a good weekend." She looked at me and said, "Mike, it's Tuesday." I'm like, "Oh, my goodness." It's like we're packing a lot into our days. So I would say big challenge is tempo. Randy?
Thanks, Mike. Another thing that we talked about was what is going well or what is a pleasant surprise? And I can't say that this is a pleasant surprise because we see this every day amongst the amazing educators in our district. But for me, what is going well is our teachers. Bottom line, they are working hard, they're collaborating, they're showing creativity, they're showing resilience, they're asking for help when we need help, they're making the best, as I said before, of a very unique situation. So what is going well? The efforts and the energy of our amazing teachers. And I can see that consistently. We are getting feedback from our community. Nothing's perfect in this scenario, but we're making the best, again, of a unique situation. And I have to give a lot of credit to the educators across the district at all levels for doing what they're doing for our students. Beth?
In line with what Randy just shared, I won't say that this is a surprise, but I have to say families have been incredibly supportive of all of the things that we're going through. I've received so many positive comments, so many notes of thanks for all the things that the staff is doing to try and help us through these different schedules and this different kind of time that we're living in. I also have to say that I've been amazed as I watch and move through the halls and the building at West Hills to see students who are in middle school complying with all of these new protocols we've asked them to help us with, to watch them as they wear masks and stand in certain areas in the halls that we've asked them to stay in so that we can socially distance. It's been really incredible to watch students and how everybody has stepped up to help to make what we have done so far possible and safe. Mike?
Yeah, I'll just add, you know, no matter what the obstacles, it's always good to work with optimists, and there's a lot of good optimism at East Hills, you know? There's a can-do spirit. People are rolling up their sleeves and getting to work. And, you know, you might not see the smiles, but you see the curiosity in their eyes, you feel the energy and, you know, in their heart, and you see the bounce in their step. So those are things that are going well. And like was said earlier, the small class sizes, you can have a lot of pack in your punch and get at it, you know, at a little different pace in the classroom. So those are some things that are going well. Randy?
If we could take us to the next slide and just some additional pictures there. And it's where do you see levels of confidence rising around teaching and learning? And just wanted to share a real quick story. We had a scenario the other day where a teacher needed to be out for a few days, and, you know, we're all doing the screener test, staff members, students, and we had a staff member that threw the screener test, just being very safe, was not allowed to come into the building, but definitely wanted to teach students. So we moved into our grappling mode, a phrase that we've been using across the district, and really trying to figure out the best way where we could have a teacher that wasn't in the building but still working with students in both that live face-to-face and remote setting. And through the technology that we have in our wonderful IT department, we had an opportunity to have this teacher remote in from home, use the sound system and the Promethean board inside of the classroom, project from the screen, and work directly with our students in the classroom as well as home. This is becoming our new norm. It's becoming an opportunity that we would have never thought about maybe a year ago, and yet through the creative thinking of our amazing teachers, this is happening now on a regular basis. So, you know, what, where do we see levels of confidence rising in our ability to teach kids in any setting? And just really respect and applaud our teachers for doing that. Beth?
Along with what Randy was saying, the use of technology and the comfort level with using technology and watching teachers and students engage through different types of technology has just been amazing. Again, as a special ed teacher, I have been really impressed in working with teachers and how we have figured out to provide accommodations for those students that would normally get accommodations like alternate test settings and extended time on tests through IEPs and 504s. We've been able to use Zoom breakout rooms so that they can get the support they need in all of their classes, even if they're remote, and they still feel supported by staff and that they can have their needs met.
So with respect to confidence, I think a lot of it is just teaching in uncertain times and knowing that we don't really know what tomorrow will look like. But, you know, are we better this month than last month, you know, this week than last week, and today than yesterday? And kind of looking at progress over perfection. I think we're growing in that area. You know, eighth grade has a lot of milestones and a lot of things that kids look to, you know, like the DC trip, the, you know, pancake breakfast, a lot of team-building activities, and the realization that those things may or may not come and just kind of clearing the clutter and, you know, turning down the noise and just staying in the moment, I think, is a skill, and it's something that we're growing in and helping build confidence in what education looks like this year. Thanks, Randy.
Absolutely, and thank you, Beth and Mike, for sharing your thoughts, and thank you to the board again for giving this opportunity to just share some thoughts from the middle school elementary level.
Thanks, Randy. We'll go to International Academy next.
Good evening, everyone. Lynn Gibson, principal of the International Academy. I just wanted to take a moment to pause because hearing our educators in our district is so inspiring. I've never been more proud to be an educator than right now, and our teachers are going above and beyond to try and make things work for our students, and they're so hard on themselves, thinking that perhaps I'm not doing enough, and they're doing so much to make the positive events that our colleagues here tonight have expressed. And I'm just so thankful and so honored, and even my own two sons who are in the district and have been since they were actually six weeks old. I asked them today, I said, "So how's the hybrid going?" And they said, "Mom, our teachers have this." And I think that we have to keep that in mind as we talk with our teachers and our social workers and our counselors and our secretaries and our custodians and our lunch folks, and we're making, we're making our kids feel comfortable in our district, and that's really important. The International Academy is certainly no exception to that. We've had, our West campus actually started hybrid on September 14th, and then our Oak Mac campus opened on October 1st, and then our East campus is opening hybrid on October 12th. So our staff across campuses, just like all of the educators who've been mentioned before, have been working really hard to make this a meaningful experience for our students. And again, I'm really proud of our district and of our staff for putting one foot in front of the other and making this happen. So Dr. Smith, who is our associate principal of our Oak Mac campus, is going to talk a little bit about the pictures and introduce a couple of things before one of our history teachers, Matt Morrison, who's a Bloomfield teacher, will talk with you.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here. As Ms. Gibson just mentioned, we started with all four grades on October 1st. So that means, you know, this afternoon, we finished our sixth full day of hybrid. And for the students who wrapped up this afternoon, you know, this was their second round of going through the full cycle of two days in the week. You know, so it was really nice to see that, especially with this group that's now been in there for four days, that they've learned a lot of the new routines, that, you know, that they're really understanding how this is going to work in the building for the coming months. And so it was just great to see that quick learning curve on behalf of the students. You know, I think one thing that just stuck out to Lynn and I, you know, so much just right off the bat on October 1st is you could just really see how happy the students were to be back in the building. I think you can say that was true across all four of our grades, that giving these, the kids this option to come back in the hybrid format, you know, for these students who felt that they really wanted to come back in person right away, it was, it seems like it was definitely the right decision for them. It was really meeting their needs for where they are at this point in this pandemic. And so we're just, I think, really happy to be able to provide students that option right now because it definitely seems to be, to be serving them well. You know, as I mentioned, we've got all four grades back, grades nine through 12. So in our building right now, we have about 250 students each day, whereas in pre-pandemic time, you know, we normally have over, a little bit over 600, around 615 students in the building. So that 250 number right now, I think I can speak for the whole staff. It feels, it feels safe, it feels, you know, really manageable. And so I echo what some of the other folks have said this morning that we're, I think, thankful for the hybrid start because this has been a really, I think, safe-feeling way to step back into in-person teaching and learning. And I think that that's true for students and staff, that, like I said, this feels really manageable at this point. And I'm just going to keep echoing, you know, I think the social emotional benefits for the students are really immeasurable. You know, you can see some of our students out on the field. I know that picture in the upper left is kind of distant, but our students have done a great job of taking advantage of the outdoors that we have on our campus. You know, so seeing the students being able to eat lunch with their peers, sitting in these nice circles, you know, just having a chance to reconnect, you can tell that that's just an immeasurable benefit for those students. The picture in the middle there, you know, that's a group of our seniors, and you can really tell that they're, you know, they were worried that maybe they were never going to get to come into the building for their senior year. So having this chance to reconnect and to be the senior leaders in the building is really just, I think, a huge benefit for them. You know, some of the challenges, I'm not going to speak for all the teachers. Mr. Morrison is here to sort of represent them and give that voice in a few minutes. But, you know, definitely one of the challenges is hybrid. I think a lot of our teachers over the last seven months became really comfortable teaching online. They quickly learned those skills in the spring, and they were really starting to feel confident in that online teaching skill. And so now there's this additional challenge of having the students in front of them in the building and then having the students who are synchronous at home at the same time. And that's definitely a new challenge that everyone's working on. What's really great to see What's what's really great to see, you know, is is the teachers are trying to figure out really quickly what are the technological solutions then that help them to do that hybrid effectively? So for some of the teachers that they're figuring out the the hardware that they need in their classroom to make this most effective, or the software that they need to make this most effective. But it's it's been, once again, a quick learning curve just in the last few days as teachers have identified what can really help them make that hybrid model be the most successful for students. You know, as I think as everyone has mentioned, you know, we're a little worried about staffing as we go into the year. We utilize what are called graduate assistants quite a bit at the International Academy. And and they're, I think, the equivalent to paraprofessionals throughout the district. And you know, we're, we're definitely trying to staff up and and make sure that we have a good core of professionals to help us get through this year. But I think as everyone knows, you know, everyone's looking for those types of individuals right now. So that's that's certainly one concern. And and then I guess, you know, my last challenge that I see going forward is, you know, over the last six days, as you can see from the pictures, our students and staff have done a great job of using the outdoors as an opportunity to to stay safe and to feel safe while they're on campus and and still get a lot of the benefits of going to school. And and we know that's going to just get a little bit more difficult as we head into a Michigan winter. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Matthew Morrison. He is one of our history teachers at the Oakma Campus and a Bloomfield Hills teacher himself, and let him tell you a little bit about the teacher perspective right now at the IA Oakma Campus.
So hopefully, everybody can hear me. Thank you very much for inviting all of us to come and address the board and also all the online viewers tonight about what's going on in the schools. I think it's, obviously, this is a difficult time for parents and for for students and staff alike. There have been a lot of successes. There's been a lot of surprises along the way. We're actually in our eighth week of instruction, so the IA starts quite early. And having started virtually, I think a lot of the initial protocols that were put into place for virtual learning, definitely as Dr. Smith and Ms. Gibson said, made the staff feel successful and comfortable. There was still a period of adjustment in the first two to three weeks for both students and for staff. But I think quickly, staff found ways to be creative with the technology and to come up with new techniques that would make sure that students' learning remained both rigorous and was the quality education that they've always received at the International Academy. I'm I'm pleased to say that even though it's been quite a switcheroo for the staff over the past few days to go on to the hybrid model, again, they're they're making adjustments. And I think we've seen several things that have worked really well. So one of the things that's been most surprising has been an just an overwhelming outpouring of support by the PTIA and by the parents within the district. In addition, the the administration's been amazing in making sure that both staff and students are incredibly safe. And I think that's made the number of students who come back, they've been pleasantly surprised, and they've been able to really focus on learning and and not feeling nervous or anxious. Also, the administration's been very, very good about providing emotional support really to the staff. I think that our greatest challenge sometimes is not not wanting to adjust any expectations. And so trying to figure out how we can maintain the level and the quality and rigor of education that we've always delivered in this new environment. And so one of the challenges has been developing new strategies, new techniques, and trying to do that very quickly. Traditionally, we work very closely together. There's a lot of collaboration among staff. I think having this new hybrid environment, a lot of it being online, has has been a challenge. And so one of the blessings has been two things that we brought into the school that we didn't have before. One was Canvas. So using Canvas has allowed us to have one single platform for parents, for students, and for staff, and has meant that the collaboration has actually accelerated a little bit. We even have teachers who are creating tutorials, sharing emails, screenshots about how to do different things, trying out new techniques. And throughout all of this, the student body has been amazing. So that's not something really that's a surprise. They've always been what makes our job so wonderful at the International Academy and in Bloomfield in general, has been amazing parents and amazing students. They've gone with us the whole, every step of the way, being willing to take risks, being willing to be flexible when things don't work, experiment. They've been incredibly responsible and their attendance, their work completion, all of that has been good, even though the demands have not really changed, maybe just the techniques and the way in which we're delivering those. That has led to the Wednesdays, the asynchronous Wednesdays have been another second edition, something new, that actually have provided a a variety of different kinds of blessings. For one, for students, teenagers hate getting up early. And so being able to manage their own time on Wednesday has not only increased their ability to feel confident and responsible, but also to have the flexibility to get a little bit of extra sleep in the morning, which a lot of the research suggests that they need. Obviously, it's not always possible within the real world due to busing and due to other kinds of demands, but it's something that I know that they've appreciated. On a staff level, those are the days in which we collaborate, where we meet with students. And also, we've had the additional benefit of being able to provide extra learning opportunities for students that they conduct in their own time. And given that during a regular lesson period, it's a little more difficult to teach both students in person and online at the same time. And so this has given us that extra bit of flexibility to provide other types of learning instruction that students can do all online on their own. And so we've kind of kept the pace going, which has been a real benefit. If there's one challenge above all, and it's obviously everybody has been mentioning it, but it's the exhaustion factor and the pressures of time, the need to plan today's lessons, grade yesterday's homework, and at the same time, conduct all the other types of learning enrichment opportunities that we provide for students on a daily basis. That's that's always a difficulty. And I think the fact that the staff are such quality and not willing to reduce their expectations or the rigor or the quality of the instruction has made it difficult. But other than, I suppose, our own work-life balance, most things are going pretty well. So it's kind of where we're at right now. It's it's been a good transition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt, for for sharing that and representing the the teacher voice on that. One of our counselors was having some technical difficulties. And just to expand on on just slightly on what you said, she talked, you know, our counselors talk with all of the students, and by and large, they are happy with the remote experience. So all of the work that our teachers have done, learning from the spring and getting ready over the summer and getting ready each day, has really paid off for our kids. The one challenge that our counselors are reporting is the the changing landscape of college admissions and how a lot of our colleges that the students are applying to are going test optional. So they're saying, should I be taking the SAT? Shouldn't I be taking the SAT? Do I just submit my grade point average and my extracurricular activities? Or do I come into school, you know, within the next couple of weeks to take the SAT so that I can have a score to send? So our our counselors are really navigating that. And the letters of recommendation that our teachers are completing right now is is stressful for our teachers, and it's because they don't want to negatively impact any college decision that that our students will be going through. And our our students are just a little bit worried about that, understandably so. Thank you for for allowing us to share this opportunity to provide information about what's going well and and what we, the the remaining challenges.
Thank you. We'll go to BHHS next.
Pat, can you hear me okay?
I hear you great. How you doing, Charlie?
Good, thank you. Well, the Black Hawks are back, literally. As people had indicated, we welcome back Cohort B today as we finish our first week in in the hybrid schedule. It was great to see so many students come into the building and it was great to greet them all. Benny, the Black Hawk, was with us along with the BIF. So as you can see from the slide, we are very excited because the building has been very lonely up until this point. I want to mention several highlights and opportunities as we reflect on this first week and, for that matter, these last several weeks. First of all, for this week, I can't commend the students and staff enough for the implementation of the COVID health and safety protocols, whether it's wearing masks, social distancing, physical distancing, or even navigating the new lunch time configurations and seating. Students and staff have just done an amazing job keeping our building and keeping each other safe. Our teachers have done an amazing job in this hybrid transition. As Pat mentioned, this is a very heavy lift for our teachers, trying to support students both online and in person. And I'm so glad to hear the comments about, from our our families, about the the support they have for teachers because we're going to need to give our professionals grace and some patience as we navigate to be successful in this hybrid schedule. And we're doing whatever we can to support our teachers going forward. On the IT side, our teacher leaders, Stephanie Bevieu and Rachel Matts, have just been outstanding. On the instructional side, Crystal La Liberty and Holly Hammerly have been amazing, supporting teachers through this. And 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 one, one fact that bears, I think, noting is that we have seven new teachers this year. So imagine coming into a situation like this, where you have to not only be in distance learning and then in a hybrid schedule. So it it is critical that we support our new teachers as well through this. Despite all of this, as you can see in the slide, Mr. Genvey continues to be happy no matter what. The other thing that I think is going very well that Lynn and Matthew mentioned was Canvas. We made a pledge over a year and a half ago to our families that we wanted to move to one platform. I don't know whether it was just good luck that the timing was such, but it's really given us a great platform to support our students, especially if they stay remote and stay back out online. And that has been, we've been very fortunate, and by all accounts, the the transition has gone very smoothly. The teachers now are using some new tools that they haven't used before, whether it's Flipgrid, Pairdeck, or any other technology tool. It's great to see our our teachers using new tools. And I think, as Matthew mentioned too, at the end of the day, when this is all over, I think there will be new innovation and new opportunities that will enhance the the classrooms going forward. And as you know, innovation is one of our cornerstones, so it's it's really important for us. The other, the other aspect that I want to highlight is our SEL lessons, our social emotional lessons that we're doing once a week and our commitment as a building and and as for that matter, as a district, to the social emotional learning piece. We can't underestimate the impact of what this has caused on the students and the adults. So our commitment to making sure we build school community and we take care and recognize the needs of each student is going to be critically important. The other thing that I wanted to mention too is that I want to thank Avis and Mike, along with all our boosters, for doing a great job keeping our student athletes and those involved in after-school activities safe. You know, it started first with Bandcamp, it seems like, almost two months ago. And and even now, most recently this week, when we had the senior pancake breakfast, as you can see on the slide, our boosters and parents have done just a great job helping reinforce the health and safety protocols. The other thing is, you can see, we're utilizing the outdoor spaces as much as possible. We've been fortunate, especially these last two weeks, to have great weather. And whether it's during the school day or after the school day, you see the jazz band under the tent in the slide, it's gone very well. So I want to thank the board and and Pat and LST for, and Brian for providing those tents and outdoor spaces to to be used effectively. The other thing too I want to mention is, this first week, especially in this transition, the attendance rate of our students has been very good, whether it be in person and online. It was one of those things, we didn't know what would happen, but by all accounts, students have been present, have been engaged. And so that is another highlight that I want to offer. The other thing is, we continue to offer all our events virtually. So the the traditional events that our our families are used to, we've got Virtual College Night coming up next week, so we're excited about that. And kudos to our counselors that continue, whether it's Financial Aid Night, College Night, College 101, or just individual counseling that are supporting our students, especially during this transition, very, very effectively. And with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Kerry Fines now, who's going to highlight for you some of our special ed programs since they've been back. And as you know, Kerry Fines is our department leader here in the building for special education. So Kerry, take it away.
Hi, Charlie. Thank you for having us today. Here to present a couple of things, and I and I echo everything that everyone has said. It has been nice to be back in the building and for teachers to see each other and students and at the high school to actually meet our new ninth graders. It was, it was really nice to be able to have them in the building and meet them in person because this has been such a different year. One thing that I know some of the other buildings also are struggling with is the technology challenges. Just while the, you know, it seems like everyone has learned these new technology methods in the classroom, it's hard to kind of bring them all together and keep students engaged both in person as well as online. And so that's when where I see the the challenge with teachers that teachers are having right now is doing both at once. But we definitely see that the kids are happy to be back in person and see each other, even if it is at a distance. And Charlie, I, I think that everything that we've put in place for kids and watching them follow the directions that they've been given is is a really great opportunity for them to be back in person as well as the staff and keep everybody safe. So Charlie, I think I'm going to send it back to you. Thank you again.
Thank, thank you, Kerry. I just wanted to, in in closing, just if I could, recognize some people that have really helped make this hybrid transition successful for us. First of all, Leonard and Debbie for partnering with us. As you can see from the communications that went out today, they are much-needed resources as we deal with COVID going forward. And it's not if we'll have cases, as as you saw today, it's when we have cases and being able to act appropriately and get the professional resources and advice. So I want to thank Leonard and Debbie for all their efforts. I also want to thank David and his team, the IT department, whether it be setting up the labs differently or, most recently, providing extra monitors to help teachers, you know, engage with students online. Our IT department has just been outstanding, so thank you to them. Also, Brian and Ken, where we've needed additional PPE, they have responded. Mary Ann and our lunch staff, for all their efforts. You know, the the nice thing is lunch is free right now. And so that has been made the process for us, especially feeding the number of students that we have, much, much easier. And they have been very accommodating to to make sure we support kids and meals throughout the day. And also, I just want to thank my team, Jessica, David, and Kathy. They have been amazing, just helping navigate the different pieces of this puzzle as we got back into the hybrid schedule. And also, as somebody alluded to earlier, I want to thank our PTO. They continue to support our families and teachers in a variety of different ways, especially the communication piece, which is so critically important during this time. And so I I appreciated Lisa's comments earlier about the question of transition. And you know, this transition right now, transitions are difficult for students, and especially at the high school, they're going through three transitions a week. So if I, you know, we're starting to look at the data right now with Pat and LST and the rest of Central Office, and and we will be ready to to make the necessary transitions, hopefully fewer, if the health and safety data allow, to get back to some normalcy sooner rather than later. But it, just in concluding, it has been a heavy lift, but I do think this is an opportunity, you know, with this COVID situation, for new innovations, and our teachers are currently engaged in that. And so I think, once this is all through, I think we will be better educators and and better equipped going forward and looking forward to getting back to some normalcy soon. So thank you. And I'll turn it over to Aileen.
Thank you, Charlie, and thank you, Board and Superintendent Watson, for having us.
Thank you Charlie, and thank you board and Superintendent Watson for having us present tonight. Last, but certainly not least, Bowers Academy. I am honored to be able to speak on behalf of Bowers Academy as the English teacher and principal. And I just wanted to share some of our highlights from kicking off the year, this year. We got to start back in person on September 14th. And we have been having an amazing time since then. One of the most important things about Bowers is our sense of place and our sense of community. And so it's really, really hard to, to do that when we are not in our space. So being back at the farm has been a great opportunity. We've had the, the opportunity to utilize a lot of our outside learning spaces and to also kind of capitalize on some of our projects that we left off in March. Some of you may know that the, the farm is now open to the community and also has a farm store. And it's pretty amazing because Bowers Academy students are responsible for kind of starting off that vision. Last year, while we were working, and I've brought this information to the board a couple of times, we, the students in their math class and English class and economics class, started a business plan and discussed budgeting and discussed supply and demand and ordered up a bunch of Bowers swag to eventually open up a store. And because of COVID, they weren't able to see that through. But thankfully Alan Jaros and his staff were able to bring the students' vision alive. And so there is now a store inside of Bowers Farm that is a joint project with the academy in the farm. And I think that that's really important and it's really important that we're back because one of the things that we really, really value is the connection between the farm and academy, but also our connection to place. If you can see this picture in the bottom right-hand corner, we were for the past couple of weeks, really digging into placed-based education and the kind of guiding questions that place-based education values. Those questions are, where am I? What is the nature of this place? And what sustains this community? And all three of those questions are pretty important to be in the space while considering them. So we've been moving around the farm, exploring all of the different places and all of the different buildings and all of the different spaces and just working together as a team to, you know, to, to figure out where we are and what the nature of this place is and kind of finding our niche, where we belong in, in the space. Tomorrow, we're really excited because we are going to learn about the process of making donuts, which is really exciting. I have tried them and the rumors are true, they are the best donuts around. So if you haven't stopped by, just a little plug for the farm. They're open on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays, and they have really great donuts. So tomorrow, the academy is going to get to experience the process of what it takes to create the donuts and then have, you know, some cider and donuts as we continue to celebrate community. One of the things that some, throughout this presentation tonight, a lot of people have alluded to is the kind of focus that the district has on social emotional learning this year. And that has always been a really strong focus at Bowers. And so having the opportunity to be together in person really helps us to capitalize on that as a focus. And you know, social emotional health is really important as far as students are concerned. But I think it's also really important as far as staff is concerned as well. And so just a little thank you to the high school team for bringing me into their group so that I could build some connections throughout COVID. And also to the Bowers staff because our, our social emotional support of not only our students, but of each other is really, really important. Also to LST and all of the other, you know, groups throughout the district have just really stepped up and really proved that Bloomfield Hills is an amazing, amazing place to be, an amazing place to work and to learn. The social emotional supports that have been across the board have just been really outstanding. Some of the levels of confidence that we see rising at Bowers specifically, I would say have to do with technology. Not everyone is super tech savvy, but as people have discussed again throughout the night, we have implemented the platform Canvas. And so it's been a really awesome opportunity to kind of see students and teachers and families learning together and navigating Canvas and utilizing that platform. And I think that it's going to be really amazing because COVID aside, I think Canvas is really going to offer an opportunity for more flexibility in general. So for example, if a student needs to be out for a non-COVID specific reason, Canvas is a really amazing way for that learning to continue. And I think that, you know, just even though there were a lot of roadblocks presented or kind of created as a result of COVID, I think that we're learning a lot about ourselves, about what we're capable of and about new strategies that we can use to continue to engage students. One of the challenges that we do see is when you are teaching in person and trying to navigate zooming students in, and so you're teaching virtually and in person at the same time. But again, the students and the staff have been so flexible and just have really come together to make this process, even when there are some roadblocks, just working together to try to come up with really positive solutions. So it's been amazing. We're super glad to be back at the farm. We hope you'll come and join us because our, our space and our place is just really, really, really valuable for us. So thank you for having me and hopefully we'll see you soon.
Thank you. Just turn it back over to LST.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, hi Susan, we can hear you great.
I'm not sure why the image isn't showing on the slide. There we go. Hi, I'm Susan Golab. I'm a part of the Learning Services team. And I just want to stop and thank all the teacher colleagues who have presented their real stories up to this point. I think you're starting to hear some themes that are coming through that we are in a time that is constantly evolving. The context in which we're used to teaching is changing, sometimes on a week to week basis. And we're resilient and we're flexible and we're adapting and we're collaboratively problem solving. You're also hearing, I really appreciate when Matthew said, you know, the pressures of time and that we have to find ways to have multiple access points for professional learning that can happen embedded within a teacher's workday. When we went into the pandemic last spring, whether you were a seasoned teacher or new, we all felt new. And we are all learning. And so there is more that we probably are juggling than we ever thought in terms of how much as instructors we have to learn all at once. I'm going to pass it to Lauren.
Hi everyone, I'm Lauren Dempsey. I'm a part of our IT team as a tech integration specialist. And just to piggyback off of what Susan said, we are all incredibly proud of the work that our teachers have done, the risks that they've taken and how they have stepped outside of their comfort zones to try to support our students and families in this unprecedented time. We, as a team, have been looking at how we can create professional learning experiences that are relevant and useful. And so we have gone through and outlined for you some of the things that we've done so far this year and some of our plans and what we want to do moving forward. If you can move to the next slide. So we understand just how precious time is for our teachers. And so we wanted to make sure that we provided some self-guided and self-directed learning opportunities for our teachers and for our staff. We have also been curating a library of vetted learning resources on our internal IT website that provides teachers with information on everything from Zoom and Cover to different external professional learning resources. We have had hundreds of teachers go through our, our own, the created self-paced courses that we've made. And we've had over 1,300 Bloomfield teachers and staff visit the IT website to view our different learning resources. And then Susan, I think you're still muted.
Not on my side.
Nope, now you're good.
Okay. As we talked about, we want to make sure that we have multiple access points, but that we're also using the already existing meeting times that teachers and staff come together. So we're seeing collaborative learning and problem-solving conversations that sometimes are organic and form. You've heard multiple administrators lift up their teacher leaders who have been helping lead conversations. Those teacher leaders are also supported and provided with resources to help support those conversations. You also have the facilitated conversations that might occur in a staff meeting, a grade level meeting, a team meeting. And because of things needing to be in short bites, those are very short focused conversations that might be looking at one particular area of instruction or how you might retool an app to make happen what you would usually do in person.
In addition to some of these less formal versions of professional development that we've offered, several different teams offered different live webinars or structured trainings to assist teachers in the distance learning transition that we experienced throughout the course of this year. During our Welcome Back Week, we offered several different live webinars in order to be able to reach large groups of teachers virtually. I've got some examples of some of these different things to show. So last spring, we created different collaborative spaces in both Google Classroom and Canvas for groups of teachers to be able to share materials, ideas, to be able to post and share lesson plans and connect with each other across either grade levels or content areas. Teachers like our K5 Phys Ed group have just been making incredible use of these spaces to brainstorm, celebrate successes, share lesson plans and other resources with each other. At the start of the school year, we delivered several different live webinar trainings to help prepare teachers for virtual or hybrid learning. We had sessions on basic distance learning principles, online learning models, walkthroughs of different digital resources and tools, and also some coaching webinars for teachers delivering their own virtual professional development. We also created some self-guided learning materials which staff could use at their own pace and at their own time. These courses offered interactive opportunities for teachers to be able to explore topics like Canvas, Google Classroom and different distance learning fundamentals. At the high school, Stephanie Bevieu, Rachel Matts and the instructional coaches there did an absolutely amazing job of guiding teachers through Canvas, which you've heard about a few times already, and creating the BHHS Staff Hub, which offers just a wealth of information there as well. So that's kind of an overview of what we've done so far. And we just wanted to talk a little bit about some of our plans for moving forward and how we want to continue to address developing professional learning.
So moving forward, we're going to continue trying to capitalize on the already embedded meeting times. So as we talked about, you're going to have teacher leaders that are in each of the buildings, that are hosting and having conversations with grade levels or in staff meetings. You're also hearing that we have to really be creating a lot of different supports and we need to make sure that we're providing choice and the ability for teachers to individualize because we have a complete virtual setup, we have hybrid, and who knows, as we continue, all the different evolving context and needs. So we're trying to design something that can pivot very quickly and can be very responsive to just the right needs that we're hearing and seeing within each week.
We'll also be continuing to provide and encourage teachers to use virtual collaboration within small and large teams to help create a culture where teachers can celebrate successes and lift each other up and just work together through some of the challenges that we all experience. For example, I know Jen Teal and the Bloomfield Virtual Team have done an amazing job in their collaborative Google Classroom of sharing information and working to create a really, really tight-knit virtual community. We're constantly looking for new ways to make professional learning more accessible and more easily relatable. So moving forward, we're going to be using some of those pre-established meeting structures like Susan was talking about and looking for other opportunities to provide job embedded learning. We'll be going back to offering something that we did last year called Lunch and Learns, which are sessions that guide teachers through educational technology use on like a drop-in level. And just really trying to explore ways to make sure that we can get information and support out to teachers in ways that aren't super formal or time-consuming and ways that actually relate to their day-to-day experiences. So thank you for your time and for listening. And thank you to everyone that came before of sharing your experiences. It's very different not being able to see everyone and walk into the buildings and, and hear those experiences. It's wonderful to have everyone share.
Thank you to everyone who presented. I, I think what you could hear is the challenges in our schools were piled high. And yet there's a lot of things that our teachers, our building principals, learning services, our drivers, everybody has been persevering through. And I think Mike really said something that I thought stands out. And as he described, you know, a way to think about this year is clearing the clutter, turning down the noise and being in the moment. And he used that as a way to say that that's really what this academic year has been about thus far. So thank you to everyone presenting. And I know we have Leonard here too, that's going to go over a little bit of information in terms and update as well.
Thank you Todd. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to everyone that, that went before me for providing the update. Wow, you know, I'll, I'll try to wrap this up and follow up a lot of great presentations. Although I'm a W, although I'm a West Bloomfield Laker in my heart today, I'm, I'm so proud to be a Bloomfield Hills Blackhawk. The work that you guys are all doing is so, so, so inspirational, so heartwarming. And I'm so proud to be a part of the work that you guys are doing. And it's, it's just so great to see. There, there are days, you know, in complete transparency and vulnerability, there are days where I feel that, you know, I feel like, I feel like I'm not doing anything right because everything is changing and, you know, that's just the nature of COVID. But you guys' presentations have, have reassured me that, you know, some of the stuff that we're doing is, is working. A lot of the things that we're doing are working. And I'm, and I'm so grateful that, that you guys have allowed me to be a part of that. Seriously, it's, it's, it's so, so amazing. As you all have seen from the previous presentations, face-to-face has largely been successful in this initial month. From what we've seen, everyone appears to be happy to be back in school. Everyone is following the appropriate protocols and guidelines and we're, we're thankful for that. We know that this school in October 2020 is not school in October 2019. We are, we are cognizant of that. We are aware of that. We want to continue to do right by the community, the state and the country by bringing our kids back appropriately. We continue to update and adapt our processes based on data-driven evidence and science and the underlying guidance from the CDC and Oakland County Health Division. Most recently, our internal possible confirmed COVID-19 reporting form. As Superintendent Watson stated earlier, you know, we are working diligently daily to update our protocols and processes that we have in place to ensure the safety of all who enter the four walls of any of our nine school buildings. Our most recent project, a collaboration with our amazing communication team, we're actively formulating a new pre-recorded message that will be played district-wide for parents utilizing the attendance hotline for reporting illnesses or other non-health-related school absences. So, you know, I say all that to say that I believe that the only competition that Bloomfield Hills Schools has is itself. I believe that, you know, we are setting the standard in a lot of areas. You know, myself and Debbie, you know, we, we talk and we, we get on these calls with the OCHD. And, you know, oftentimes we're the highlight of, of these conversations because we're the first to do a lot of things. You know, we were, we were the first to have, you know, some form of quarantine room guidelines. You know, we, we were so quick to have it that the OCHD didn't even have a countywide form available. You know, we were so quick to have it that the OCHD didn't even have a countywide form available for the district. You know, so they were looking at a lot of what we were doing. So I'm very proud of the diligence, the forward-thinking of so many of the administrators that I've been in contact with because a lot of the changes that we made did not come from myself. A lot of the changes that we made came from, you know, administrators who provided thoughtful suggestions. The awesome cabinet that I work with, you know, they've provided suggestions. None of this work has been done in a silo, none of this work has been done in maverick form. And like I said, I can't be, I don't want to be parsimonious at all in my thanks to everyone that has supported the work that we're doing. We firmly, firmly believe that while school year 2020, 2021 is like nothing other, we are focused and so driven and set on making this the best school year possible. For all the families and students out there watching, I assure you that we are working so hard to make this work for you guys. So, you know, to conclude, I'd just like to say thank you again so much to the cabinet that I work with. Thank you to all the administrators, the building principals that I've worked with. Thank you to all the teachers who are showing the utmost selflessness. Thank you to the paraprofessionals who are, you know, being repurposed across the district and in some cases, manning our quarantine rooms and, you know, putting themselves at risk. Thank you to our custodial team, thank you to, just thank you to everybody. There are so many people, and I'm sorry if I forgot anybody. But lastly, thank you to our board because you all approved me to be here. And I feel a great bolt of confidence knowing that you all believe in us and the work that we're doing. And I know that together, we will make it through this 2020, 2021 school year, and we'll be better for it. So in conclusion, stay positive, test negative, and go Blackhawks. Thank you.
Thanks, Leonard. We'll move on to Part Three now, which is the bond update.
Actually, Pat, just wanted to see if any of my colleagues have any questions regarding that. I'll first go to people online. Jackie?
I have no questions. It's amazing. Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. Cynthia?
Thank you, Paul. I guess what I'm, a couple of things. It's wonderful to hear from all the different teachers' perspective. I'm really happy to see that we have teachers who are finding ways in this good weather to use some of our outdoor learning opportunities. I guess one question, you know, some of the things that we've heard from some of the family comments that we've heard in letters and in public comment, asked about, you know, do we really feel that the asynchronous Wednesdays are as effective as they could be? I didn't hear as much comment from our teachers about that as I might have liked to have heard of this week, like to know whether they feel like students are really making the best use of that time on Wednesday. And then also in the social-emotional sharing time, you know, we're hearing from some families that our students are frustrated and upset, and I'm wondering how much they are hearing that from our students and being able to help them figure their way through it.
Pat, do you want someone from your team to take those questions?
Sorry, I was going to go down some notes. Yeah, is there anyone from LSU or one of the building administrators have any feedback on that as far as teachers and their opinion on asynchronous Wednesdays? Or any class?
I can speak to it a little bit, Pat, if you'd like me to.
Sure, thanks, Nick.
I think Wednesdays have become a little bit of a struggle, I think, for a few reasons. Cynthia and to the board, one of them is because on the hybrid schedule, if students are, if families have already created a schedule to go on the AM or PM, it's become a, you know, and one of the situations is scheduling. The other is that the amount of time that now the student has spent with the teacher getting direct instruction now is turning to virtual and it's less face-to-face time. Even when I say face-to-face, you know, I'm saying virtually face-to-face on a Wednesday. I think it's creating some struggles at home. And I say that as the administrator of an elementary school and as a parent of three children. And it's because, you know, especially at the elementary, I won't speak to, you know, I don't think I have the expertise to speak to the middle and high school situation, but at the elementary level, new learning requires some type of guidance. You know, for lack of better words, almost hand-holding, you know, that's the purpose of the teacher. And I think that there's a conflict there on the Wednesdays where the majority of what's happening is asynchronous. And the amount of work that the teacher, I'm sorry, that the student feels is that they have to get done or that the parent feels like this onus to complete the work with them. I think it's just created different tiers of problems. I don't know if it's like quote-unquote solvable. I really don't. I think we're working through some of those pieces, you know, increasing sometimes with students. You know, we see, much like we probably everywhere across the nation, you see a need for students who maybe need some extra help. They might be, you know, not the highest achieving students, maybe not the lowest achieving students, they may be right in the middle, but they need some extra help. And so our teachers are trying to really kind of row those waters of which students really need to focus on the most. And that creates its own equity challenges too because, so I just think there's, as Pat said earlier too, to steal his verbiage, there's sometimes isn't a good way out of it, you know, or a good way into it at this point. It's not perfect, but the Wednesdays, I think that's what they're feeling is in the Wednesdays. It's creating different tiers of problems.
Well, thank you, Nick. I appreciate you talking about the ways you're continuing to struggle through things. First of all, doing the schedule is still so fresh. You know, I don't think we could certainly not expect that everything's going to be, not going to be like a normal time. But we really appreciate all the efforts that all of our staff are trying to do to provide support to all of our kids. I'm not asking this in a critical way, I'm just trying to, you know, sort of talk about and share a little bit of the struggles that we continue to try to figure out.
I suspect the independence level of the child plays a role into that as well. So Nick is bringing in an elementary perspective. There's a big difference between a five-year-old working on a Wednesday asynchronously and a 15-year-old. And so I didn't know if anybody wanted to share kind of a secondary version along with Nick. I'm not sure that you would share something radically different, but maybe a little bit more of a secondary perspective.
I'm happy to provide a little bit of the high school perspective. I just know the, you know, the teachers have commented, it's really, it's hard to find that sweet spot for that synchronous day. You know, especially for, you know, high school classes, there's some really defined content expectations for the end of the year or of a multiple-year cycle. Teachers are very aware of the content they need to cover in a given school year. But, and so, you know, in some cases, they were saying, okay, these are good learnings for students to review on Wednesdays. But then earlier this school, we were getting some feedback from the students that, hey, my four regular days of the week are fine, they're very manageable. But then I feel like Wednesdays can sometimes be overwhelming. And so I think, just like everyone, learning in this new paradigm, I think it's trying to find that sweet spot at the secondary level of how do you keep those asynchronous days engaging while at the same time, you know, not making those asynchronous days, you know, become essentially like a 12- or 13-hour workday for the students because they're trying to complete, you know, almost like a whole week's worth of assignments all on this one day where they're not responsible for the meetings. So I think it's that balancing act. And I'm personally pretty confident that the teachers are going to find that right measure at the high school level as they make their way through it with more experience this fall.
Thank you, Chris.
Todd, can I piggyback also, and I just want to echo what Chris said too in terms of, I think many of our families are looking for that consistency in instruction on a regular basis. And that's just opposed with the opportunities when we look at student engagement and how it can take many different forms. So, but I think that, again, just looking back, it's another transition for kids, which can be difficult.
Todd, I'll share as well from the middle school level. And Cynthia, you had referenced this, it's just, it's new for everybody. It's a brand-new experience. I like how Mike described it earlier in his presentation where he said, "It's like a pit crew, and we're trying to find our rhythm." And the reality of it is, as educators, we want as much time as possible with our students. But we're looking at short bursts. We're looking at a short burst at that middle school level where they're working in electives and with speciality teachers. And then there's a check-in where we're working with them and just, you know, making sure that they're in tune with what we've been doing in the previous days or helping support them in the days ahead. And then they go into another short burst. So, you know, I think the reality of this is just finding our rhythm and finding an opportunity to, as we've said, find that sweet spot with our students where they're feeling supported and our teachers feel like the time that we have with our students are well-spent.
I might just add that this is so new for everyone. So even our veteran teachers, our mentor teachers who have provided guidance for people who haven't been in the teaching profession as long, everybody is learning this new together. And that's frustrating because, you know, there's just no mentoring. I mean, certainly, there are teachers who are taking leadership roles and providing the guidance. And we all, all of our schools are experiencing those point people, but it's really challenging for teachers because they just haven't had to do it before.
Thank you so much, Lynn.
I was just going to add, from a special education standpoint in Wing Lake, we've been able, as the special education department, to hold some professional learning for our staff that's needed in the areas of like CLP and recovery services and other areas as well on Wednesdays. And then at Wing Lake, for example, we're using Wednesdays to hold all of our IEPs. So all of our teachers are doing a live synchronous lesson in the morning. But then the rest of the day, we're holding all of our IEPs. And that's helping because we are not taking staff away from students on the other days. And so all of the related service staff have been able to attend IEPs in this model. And so like others have said, it's new, we're getting used to it. Is it the most ideal? Maybe, maybe not. But it's definitely, there have been some benefits as well.
That's a great point that Rebecca's bringing in around Wednesdays because, you know, the role of the teacher doesn't start and end with that time with the student. In the backdrop of that list or situates studying student data, attending IEPs, being at a 504 meeting, collaborating with colleagues, being able to plan throughout the week. So like, that time, that structure that's available, that's important as well because really what we've done with the hybrid schedule is try to maximize and leverage the in-person time to have the students in school. And so behind that, you know, becomes the structure in which there are other engagements that don't necessarily, that our teachers are also engaged in, but doesn't necessarily come into the classroom during that instructional time. It sits behind that. It's not as easily seen, but it is a whole nother layer of responsibility that they're engaged in during that time.
All right. Anything, I guess Cynthia, you can answer your questions? Lisa?
Okay, I'll try and be brief. But I had a list of people to thank, and Charlie got most of them, all of them. Thanks, first of all, to the teachers. This, I've got two in high school, two kids in high school. So, you know, they're kind of my guinea pigs to be able to see what's going on from their perspective. This was the first week that they've done the simultaneous in-person and at home. And I know that that presented a lot of challenges for teachers, but some amazing innovative improvements from one day to the next with this. So the idea that it's brand-new and that everyone's learning is absolutely what I'm seeing as a parent. I could just give a couple of really quick examples. But one of my kids' classes, on the first day, there were questions coming in from face-to-face, but they weren't repeated, so the kids at home couldn't hear them. And then by day two, an apology, repeating the question, problem solved. So, you know, they're not maybe all that easy to fix, but really excellent examples of, you know, using the whiteboards and having even the face-to-face kids on Zoom so they could interact with each other. I don't know how that was rigged, but one of the teachers using Wednesday to do one-on-one extra help with students. Just amazing stuff going on. Thanks to Leonard. The face-to-face stuff has been way beyond my expectations of safe. I was picturing stuff in my head that I'd seen like on, you know, Twitter and crowded hallways, kids not wearing masks, none of that has been reported to me. And, you know, we've got some pretty vigilant students and parents watching this. So really amazing lunches spaced out like clockwork, kids sitting distance. Beyond well-done. I did want to, again, thank the PTO, especially all of the schools. Their communication has been outstanding. It's really a lifeline for parents. There's questions, lots. I don't know the answers, most of which I don't know the answer to. The answers appear within minutes. So thank you for following through, parent volunteers for following through with that. Thank you, Todd, for the format of tonight's meeting. But we had briefly asked for some kind of update from the buildings themselves. This is so far beyond my expectations. It was wonderful to see what's happening in all the buildings and hear it firsthand. Thank you so much. And for the IT department, I don't, I'm not a tech person, but even just to watch what they're doing tonight, crawling around on the floor, plugging things in, helping us get through, it's an incredible job to service this many people in this way. And I don't know how it's done as seamlessly and so gracious. So if you ask questions and need help, you know, just beyond supportive. There's lots more people to thank, but I really am overwhelmed with the way we're proceeding so far. I do have a couple of questions. One of them is the webinars that you're putting on for teachers for professional development. Is there anything we can do for parents because it's tough? Especially K-5, maybe, K-5 maybe especially because they're helping their kids through a lot of this. Any shortcuts, any, anything, any kind of things that we could, even, you know, like virtual places that they can bounce ideas off each other even? Help each other?
Lisa, I can speak to that a little bit. This is Lauren Dempsey again. We have opened up, we started it back in March and have continued to do so, having a specific support lines for parents and families, a way for them to reach out and get in touch with. get in touch with our IT department for kind of one-off instances where they need help. And that has, I think it's been really, really successful. It's been a ton of work, but it's been really good. We've gotten a lot of great feedback from parents as well. And we're currently working on just trying to figure out the right platform and the right place to reach out in more of a live fashion for tech support or for tutorials. We've worked to send out job aids, especially when it comes to things like Zoom or Google Meet or Google Classroom or Canvas. I know Stephanie and Rachel have put together a, just a ton of information available for parents and students on Canvas and accessing all of that. So there's still a lot of work being done just to figure out the right way to deliver it in a live setting or in whether it's a YouTube channel or different ideas that are getting bounced around constantly, but we're definitely working on it.
Great. I mean, it would be nice to give them a place to talk to each other as well. So maybe live if possible and not just tech support, any kind of help, support.
Yeah, definitely. That'd be, that'd be something for us to look into and figure out the right platform and a way, just ways to host it and things like that. But that's great feedback and we'll definitely take that to the table as a team.
Thank you. Okay, one last question. This is really for Lynn or for Chris. Are the three, are the two other IA campuses doing the same kind of simultaneous face-to-face and at home? Or will they be when they return to face-to-face? And if so, I know West has been, I think, open, or face-to-face a week before us. Are they, are there, are they able to, to share any of the secrets about how this is working for them?
Sure. So West has been open hybrid since Sep- or September 14th. And so they've been in for a while now. And what the teachers are reporting is that they're feeling more comfortable, they're less tired, they're figuring out the tricks. We gave some tips that our students shared. For example, you know, having a static camera in the classroom instead of having, trying to move with you. Some of our teachers were really experimenting and trying to engage everybody, but that didn't seem over as well. They, that was one tip that they shared. They've shared information about how you can hear people on the microphone. And so we're actually looking into some different microphone options, but our chosen microphone is still on backwater. So, so those, the students shared that the experience has been very positive, the breakout rooms, you know, all, all of these different strategies. And so we shared that with the, the Oakma and the East Campus staff, but it's a little bit hard to, for them to embrace that until they've been in the scenario. And so I think that's probably now they're looking at the feedback going, oh, okay, I get what that means now. But what was most encouraging really to me is that the, the West staff is feeling a comfort level. They're feeling a sense of calm and our, our central Oakma teachers are like, okay, it's great to see the kids, I'm getting this. Chris, what would you have to add to that?
I agree with everything that Lynn just said. You know, so that kind of actually goes back to the, the previous question about those asynchronous days is it's, it's also the time when the teachers in the IA model are in those tri-campus meetings synchronously together. And, and so, you know, ever since the first week that the West campus started, the, the Oakma and East teachers, you know, jumped in those meetings. And before they got down to any department business, obviously they wanted to hear about hybrid and, and what worked and what didn't work and what they needed to have in place. You know, as Lynn mentioned, there, you know, it, it's also, you're not really in it until you're in it and, and until it actually starts. But, but definitely, you know, among the, the tri-campus staff, you know, just, just having a little bit more of, of a heads up about what to expect and, and do's and don'ts in these different models has definitely been an advantage.
Yeah. Mark?
Thank you so much, everybody. This is really, really amazing to hear the personal stories. I'm very grateful. My, my two high school students, I have one at IA and one at BHHS, we're very happy to be able to go back this week. And so I'm just hearing these flabbergasting stories about collaboration, partnership, listening to, to you all speak about teachers stepping up, students stepping up, not having to nag everybody to keep their mask on. All of that has really exceeded expectations and, and I, I love what somebody said about optimism. You know, I think this is, you have two choices in a situation like this and just freak out or, or pull together and, and make some lemonade. And so I'm really hearing the second and, and rising to the challenge. And I, I try to think of like, what are we going to, we're going to know so much when, when this is over, right? Like it's, it's really a great experience to, to know that we have a community that can pull together like this. I, I don't have any questions. I just, I just have a comment. We've been receiving a wave of emails recently. I'm sure you guys hear the same feedback. There, there are lots of families who want to be back full-time. Obviously we have to know that what we're doing right now is safe and not going to be the source of an outbreak before we can attempt another transition. I, my ask of you is to acknowledge that people are frustrated and like Lisa was saying, to, to really ramp up communication as much as possible with the families, have them, you know, lots and lots, the more information the families have, the easier this gets. And, and for the students, like I, I was hearing that like at IA with the student feedback, I think if to the extent that that could be extended to having middle school students and elementary students inform their experience to make those asynchronous times more successful. And to possibly, you know, I, I understand the needs of planning and so forth, but to possibly make it such that it could, we could have a 50% in-person exposure instead of maybe a 40%. Maybe that is a goal that, that we could, I, I would ask that we look at, working towards. For the community, every, I think everyone in this meeting wants to see us back full-time face-to-face. That is obviously everybody's goal, including mine for my own children. But we have to know that we are doing it in a, in a measured and sensible way. So thank you so much, everybody. Thank you for coming and, and taking the time to share these stories. I think it's just a real blessing to be in a community that has such deep human resources, tech resources, and for making it happen. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Yeah, I, I mean, the only thing I'd say, just a comment, thank you for the, you know, to everyone involved for the thorough presentation, you know, from all the buildings across the district on what we're doing to, to accommodate, you know, getting students back and everything we're also doing from a Bluefield Virtual perspective. So, you know, I just say thank you. I don't have any questions. Any questions I have already asked and already answered. Howard?
The Bluefield Hills School District has 1,050 employees. I'd like to send 1,050 thank yous to everything that you're doing.
Thanks, Howard. Pat, with that, we'll go to the Bluefield Board Bond Update.
All right. Great. Thank you, President Cohen. So part three, bond update. And I will turn the first part over to Tina.
I presume everyone can hear me, otherwise you'd be waving at me that you can't. So I have here a summary that we covered in more detail at FFLA earlier today. Our financial advisor joined us to cover the details of the bonds that were sold last week. This is a summary of the key factors and includes the parameters that were approved by the board with the bond resolution back in August. Last week's bond issuance went very well with favorable variances for all of the parameters listed. Basically investors liked our bonds. No surprise there, that's what we hoped for. In particular though, with the market timing of last week's sale, including a lower interest rate, it reduced the total debt service payment for this series of bonds from the original estimate, down by about 36 million. And that's the third row there, the total debt service payment. So that was extremely favorable. In addition, the construction fund, the line above it, the construction fund deposit is about a half a million dollars more. So that goes towards construction projects. But in addition, we know currently our investment earning rates are also down. So some of that extra deposit would offset any decline in investment earnings. So these are just the highlights of details we discussed at FFLA. And I'm not sure if anyone has any questions, but I'm happy to entertain those before we move on.
We'll save our questions for then, Tina. Thank you.
Yep, we'll keep going. Next slide. So we know as part of the bond that, you know, we're going to be building a steam center. And we know part of the steam center will include robotics. We also know that robotics is currently housing Lasser and that Lasser is going to be going through construction and other things starting end of December, beginning of January, and that we need to find either move robotics to their permanent home, which of right now is where maintenance is currently located, or find a temporary home for robotics until the steam center is completed. So I'd like to take you through some of the different things we looked at. One of the first options that came up was relocated robotics to the field house and kind of cutting the field house in half. So this would be a temporary area for it. It's also a student occupied facility, school construction code, there's some requirements, meeting with some of the robotics volunteers that it feels really going to be a good fit for them. And after we finish our overall survey of the area and looking at costs, estimated cost for about $429,000 and realized that's not a good tip for the district either. At that point, we started looking at some additional properties, properties that either A, we could move maintenance to, B, we could move robotics to, or C, we can move maintenance and robotics to temporarily and maybe possibly have that be the new steam home. So Paul Walls and I, Paul, if you want to kind of talk about each little property and I'll talk about some of the pros and cons afterwards, if you don't mind?
Sure. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Hi, Paul.
Hello, everybody. So again, as Superintendent Watson mentioned, this is a 15,000 square foot building on Franklin parking foot facility. And again, the long-term solution would be obviously looking at this in the five-year window of how do you look at the robotics program, operations program with the other things that are going on within the overall district? So we start looking at other options relative to timing. So on the next slide. So this currently is a 5,400 square foot suite. It's actually on Franklin Road and this will be a five-year lease. You can see some of the benefits or benefits of the suites. So for instance, it does have 16-foot center, 16-foot high ceilings, has two overhead doors. And these minimal requirements in terms of renovating it to really create a robotics field. We actually had a chance to walk through Boba Lee and Kelly Cook this afternoon to really, where the shop areas would be, where the field area would be, again, some of the offices and other support spaces. Again, and this would be a temporary location, but the space is readily available. And there's also on either side of it to potentially expand within that five-year window. I'll just, so again, take out that times a square footage. That's about it.
While you're growing in and out or now I can do it.
Yeah, it's gone past. So I'll kind of pick up from there. So I had a chance to view this property as well. Not enough room for maintenance, but potentially enough room for robotics for a temporary home at this point. So looking at the next slide.
So the next slide, this is actually further down Enterprise Court. So it's near Franklin Road, just north of Square Lake. The suite's about 10,000 square feet. It is about two-thirds built out with offices. There's about a 2,000 or 3,000 square foot open shop with a toilet room kind of right in the center of that. So this space, while readily available, would require additional construction renovation to really get it ready for robotics program. Because of the closed offices and some of the additional spaces, this may be a, maybe a dual operations, temporary offices as well as robotics. So you could have maybe potential operations and robotics.
And one of the things we looked at was overall price as far as leasing or even purchasing. And it was considerably higher than some of the other opportunities. So looking at the next slide. Had a chance to visit this one as well. We looked at this as a temporary spot for robotics and for maintenance. We also looked at possibly this being the steam center. 23,000 square feet facility has great potential. The price is quite a bit high at 1.69 million. There's some thought that we could possibly get it a little bit lower, but it's definitely not what we have budgeted for the steam center. Potentially if there's a donor that's willing to come forward and maybe have some type of cooperation or cooperative agreement with us, then that's something we could look at in the future. But based on the expense, was not quite the right fit at the moment.
I think Pat with this one too, also the ceiling height was only 12 feet tall. So that was one of the other limiting factors.
Correct. Ceilings are only 12 feet high in this one. So based on, and I believe I'm looking at one other property on Monday, but based on where we're at right now, we feel it might be our best bet is looking at the one that's 5,400 square feet, which would have more of an open floor plan as a temporary home for robotics. Continuing on from there. So planning forward. So as we continue to work on the bond, here's what we're looking at for feedback. So starting with Cabinet and District Staff would be determining designs and getting community input and interactions organized. At that point, Cabinet and District Staff would take that information to FFLA. And FFLA, we talked about this a little bit today, besides reviewing the finances, we would, FFLA would review input and interactions, plans, provide feedback. So we would come to FFLA and say, here's what we're thinking about doing. Here's the different stakeholders we're going to engage. Here's why we're engaging these different stakeholders. At that point, Cabinet and District Staff would make any adjustments and then we would launch different interactions. It might be surveys, it might be a focus group, it might be some other type of interaction, it might be a town hall. After taking that and getting that information, we'd like to reengage the scope and design team. They were very instrumental in passing the bond, they were very instrumental in all the work. The scope and design team, the same scope and design team that was here when I started, I met with them summer when I first got hired, they would review the interactions, look at the data, look at the themes, and then help share it out with District Staff. At that point, District Staff would take all the information and use this feedback and information to guide decisions. And then those decisions will be reported back to Cabinet and to FFLA again. So twice things will be coming through FFLA as we went along. Next slide. Middle school planning, which is what we're looking at currently because we know that Lasser has to go through some significant changes. So mechanical, electrical support, site planning. When I say site planning, where's the road going to be, how many parking spots are we going to have, where are we putting the handicap spots, spots? That took place in September. And then beginning in October and through January, we'll see the physical activity areas, middle school TV and potential learning communities. You can see there's another study session update, media center, the entrepreneur area, worker, you know, kind of like a steam shop area. That would be again, beginning in November, going through January, performing in visual arts, then another study session. So basically between now and January, we'll be engaging the different groups, discussing the middle school and what may be taking place at the middle school in the future. Moving on from there, additional planning with the bond update. Brian, if you want to talk about mechanical, electrical and support spaces?
Yeah, so we've already met with, with our in-house skilled trades and our maintenance personnel about the different types of equipment and systems that are available and that we're accustomed to. And we'll be looking at the new and high-tech equipment from our, from the manufacturers as they lead us through site visits. As Pat mentioned, we had some As Pat mentioned, we had some site review meetings, so we've got some conceptual drawings of, you know, interaction with parent drop-off and bus loops and parking and at the two different middle schools. And remember, all of our discussions so far is just about middle school, north and south. And this is the important part, and this is important why we can find a home for robotics quickly and get maintenance moved out of Loser. Bid package number one is the Loser demo package. That certainly doesn't mean we're tearing everything down, but there's going to be selective demolition with inside the building. There's going to be walls removed and, you know, systems removed, and asbestos abatement. That's a December bid and award schedule. And as of now, our asbestos abatement is under budget, which is nice. This is David's, if he's on.
Yeah, I'm on. Obviously, in August and part of the bond, technology is an important component. And, you know, we've been working on our, our systems review, our procurement strategy is going to be identifying some of those technologies and/or the concepts of what those technologies might look like. And then, of course, as we get into October here and into the winter, we're going to be working on our pilot teams and demos. We'll be planning for developing at least one, if not multiple, demo rooms and capabilities within the district, much like we did with the high school. And that's it.
Thanks, guys. So we'll go around, I'll first start again with Cynthia and Jackie. Cynthia, do you have any questions? Comments?
I guess a question I might ask is, and we're talking about the, the process, back to that slide, where the, of the whole process that we're going to use to get to, yeah, the feedback loop. A question I might ask is, you know, will we, will the board have any engagement with our architects on how they're going to translate the, some of the instructional dreaming, the time spaces that we've wanted? Will we get to see a little bit of their thinking as that goes through the process?
Is that something you would feel would be best placed in a study session as we move along?
I think that's up to Pat and your team to help us, you know, move along in the same thinking. But I think it will help everybody catch the excitement of what's coming down the pike, and that certainly might be a good way to do it.
All right, we'll look at that and then share something out. Thank you.
Anything else, Cynthia?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Cynthia. Jackie?
I don't really have a question, but I agree that it's really important. I see that you have in community, the community involvement of surveys, focus groups, and other interactions. But I think that it's important to also check in with the community on the best ways to reach everyone. I think it's really important that people get to see milestones and, and continually monitor, because it does take, it is kind of, you know, going through already what we've been through at the high school, it takes a lot of time, you know, to complete everything. And also, sometimes there's, there's roadblocks or delays. So it's really good to keep that continuous.
Thanks, Jackie.
One of the things we're going to do is keep updating the website, the district website. So if you go to the district website and click on bond, it'll be all the new information since the bond is passed. So when it's videos, or site tours, or notes, or plans, or, you know, information from meetings, we'll make sure we post everything there as well. So for the people that are looking just for one spot to go, take a look, find out what's going on, they'll be able to go to the website. And the beginning of that is already on the district website right now with the newer information.
Great, thanks.
I'll go this way. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm looking at this from the parent and the student's perspective. So two questions. One, for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, I'm assuming that the only impact that the bond's going to have is related to robotics. Is that correct?
Short term?
That's correct.
Okay, and?
We also have the catchment areas we'll be going over as part of this school year as well. And so
I'm sorry, say it again?
The catchment areas, we'll begin starting to work on the catchment areas.
But, but it's not going to, the day-to-day in the buildings, the only thing that's going to be impacted is the robotics?
Yes.
Okay. So I know the robotics program, their build starts right after the first of the year, in two thousand twenty-one. So the, do we have a timeline of not only when we need to make these decisions related to their either permanent or temporary housing, and then the actual physical effort of pulling machines out, getting them repositioned, electrical, everything else that has to be done? Because I think the robotics first program has not been officially decided in terms of whether they're going to go physical or virtual. But if they do go physical, we only have, you know, less than three months to, and Christmas and New Year's in between, and Thanksgiving. So there's a, probably, it would be nice to kind of see a timeline on that, just to make sure that the grant chart, that it all works. And then for the two thousand one, oh, two thousand two educational year and the two thousand three educational year, when we're doing construction, at some point, obviously, the first one out of the block, because Loser is basically offline because there are no students there now, but BHMS has students. So have we really been able to communicate to the parents and to the students what impact construction is going to have in the next school year? And then obviously, the school year after that, when the elementary schools start changing around. But what type of changes, if any, they are going to see? Do they, you know, will they have to shift entrances? Will they, will it be done all over the summer vacation and Christmas and Easter break? You know, really, now that the bond has been approved, we really need to communicate exactly what's coming, you know, how is this going to impact me as a parent and a kid, especially for the two thousand twenty-two school year?
Cynthia?
I, I, Howard, the first competition they have, they have announced in September that the first championships are now going to be moved to mid-July and early August in Detroit.
Well, that's
The later timeline than is normally, it's April.
Okay, so anyway, obviously coordinating with first, just to see how, because there's the competition, but then the build and the putting in the bag and all the other pieces that go into robotics.
We'll work hand-in-hand with robotics on the timeline and timing for that.
So, so when we actually are approving this, maybe in the next board meeting, the board meeting after, it would be great to not only see that timeline, but also be able to have representatives of robotics here, so that we hear them in, you know, face-to-face saying, yep, this is, we like this plan, and this is something we can support.
Pat, I can, I can speak to the question regarding the twenty-two school year, if you'd like me to touch on that a little bit.
Yeah, thanks, Daryl.
Yeah, we'll, we'll develop very detailed site logistics plans that we'll share, you know, we'll develop with operations and
Just one second, Darrell. Darrell, can you introduce yourself in terms of your role, so the community knows who you are?
Absolutely. My name's Darrell Donbro. I'm the project manager for Barton Mallow for the two thousand twenty bond program. And so we'll develop, you know, we'll develop very detailed site logistics plans. They talk about the movement of construction throughout, actually throughout the next three years. So BHMS, for example, will have significant work done. Now, Barton Mallow, we've, we've done similar type projects in the district, and we've done it, you know, all over the state. And so we'll, we'll develop something that we can communicate out to, you know, to the board and to parents and the community. And we've already started that work, and we'll, you know, we'll be sure to share that through Superintendent Watson to the board. And every, every move on that site will be, will be laid out detail and communicated to the superintendent or to the principal.
Well, absolutely. So generally, at what point in the school year would that be coming? Would that be coming by, you know, Christmas time, or the spring, or, you know, summertime?
Yep. Construction will start at BHMS and Loser in the springtime. And so we'll start seeing things like, you know, fences go up and work start. BHMS will be a little bit later in the process. So that will start more when school gets out this summer. And so we'll, we're starting to develop those plans now. We've heard, had preliminary conversations with the principals, kind of outlining our communication plan. We'll have daily, we'll have onsite presence every day, communicating to the staff to make sure they know what's happening onsite.
Well, I, I'm mostly interested in communication to the parents. So obviously, there's a construction piece and then working with the teachers, but really getting out to the parents and the students, so they know what's coming down the pike.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions, Howard?
No, that's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, so, so yeah, so my, my question is a little bit more. So Darrell, you're on the call. You've indicated you're project manager. So looking over like the contract we have at Barton Mallow. So things like transition, first transition, obviously, that we've been approached with is the robotics transition. So is it your role, basically, to make sure and working with our administration, community, to make sure that these transitions are effectively communicated? And if so, you know, how are they going to be communicated and when, ahead of time, you know, to make sure that these are smooth throughout the next couple of years?
Yeah, that, I mean, we'll work closely with the administration, and that's going to, and, you know, as you mentioned, to the years, I mean, this will happen constantly from now to the end of the bond program. You know, as we touch every building, that communication will happen. We'll work with Superintendent Watson to develop that plan, and then, you know, use your communications department to help communicate that out to the, to the parents.
So is it, so it's Barton Mallow, it's your role as the project manager to kind of oversee, anticipate, bounce out what the transitions are, work with administration or communication to get out the appropriate communications, you know, to the various stakeholders? Like, you know, like, was it, was it your response, I'm saying, was it your responsibility to put together a plan for our robotics team to move out of Loser?
So we worked with, in conjunction with Plant Moran and the district to, to put this plan together. So Plant Moran, you know, acting as your real estate agent, went and reviewed the properties. We worked with administration to develop some cost estimates that would help work through the timing of those items.
Okay. All right, fine. I don't, I don't have any other questions. Jennifer?
Okay, I'd like to ask and speak about two things. I'd like to start with a shorter one first. I'm going back to the circle graph of process. I think that's lovely to have a process. I'm just, I'm just sort of thinking out loud as to what level of detail is, does that entail? And also, is that a mechanism to keep financial accountability in check and make sure that we are not overspending at any point in the process? Which part of this incredibly complicated project is going to have oversight for that part?
Tina, why don't you mention what we talked about in FFLA a few hours ago?
Are you talking about FFLA being the oversight committee?
We, we had a good ten minutes or so, I think, talking about this very subject.
Yes, we did. And it all stems from your, your question, Howard, on some of the examples you provided and how FFLA's role would be the oversight committee, which I think you even asked for a comparison with Cynthia to the high school leadership committee that we had. So the FFLA committee would have, because there are three board members, it's not because it's FFLA and financial related, which would be a part of the reporting that we would do at FFLA, but there are, you know, three board members that would then represent the full board and be more frequently updated and addressing the details, not only financially, but where we're at, and also anyone that was involved in providing input into the design and the decisions as we progress. Hopefully, that summed up what you were thinking, Howard.
I guess, so my, my real question here is, so every time that process wheel spins around once, are we saying, are we on budget? Are we in budget? Like, what, to what level of accountability is that going to occur?
Yeah, that, I can answer that question.
Yeah, go ahead, Darrell. Well, we did meet, and maybe you can see if we missed it. So specific to the finances, we, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, one of the things we talked about in FFLA a few hours ago is, so we have a total budget of two hundred million. That two hundred million is split apart into multiple buildings.
Hey, Howard, just for our community, I know people have asked us in the past, just explain FF, when we say FFLA?
Okay, sure. We, the, the board has basically two major committees. We have an instruction committee, and we have an all-other committee. And all-other committee is FFLA, Finance, Facilities, and Legal Affairs. So it's basically all the backroom operations as opposed to the instruction committee, which really is responsible for the principals and the teachers and all the curriculum that goes on in the buildings. So what we talked about is, so this is very different than what we had in the high school. Because the high school, we had about eighty million dollars, and it was all concentrated in one building. Now we've got two hundred million dollars, and it's covering basically every single building we've got. So the two hundred million is set up in buckets of so much for BHMS, so much for Middle School South, Middle School North, you know, the four elementary schools, et cetera, et cetera. So it's FFLA's job to unmanage, looking at those different categories, and make sure that the spending for each one of those buildings stays within the budget for each one of those buildings. And if there has to be, if there are issues going on with a certain building, if monies have to be swapped between different buildings, that would be coming to FFLA. Also, in any construction project like this, especially that's going out six years, there are contingency funds, not only for inflation, because costs now are going to be a lot different than cost in five or six years, and that's been factored in, but also there are contingency funds for things that pop up that were not anticipated. So FFLA would also be responsible for overseeing as the monies move from those contingency funds, which are kind of miscellaneous buckets of money, into the categories as they're needed. And Brian would be, and Barton Mallow would be advising us in terms of what those needs are. But it would be our responsibility to approve those monies moving around as necessary during the six years, and then monitoring the forecast of the two hundred million in total, to make sure that we're not potentially exceeding it. And at some point, you know, if, and I've, I've, when I was at, when I was really working, I managed two one-billion-dollar projects of constructing major manufacturing facilities. So I've done this before. So we can, we watch that. You don't, if you have a problem at the beginning, you don't want to blow the whistle too quickly, because you've got number of years to find savings, but you don't want to wait too long. If you wait too long, then all of a sudden, you know, it's five years into the six years, and now you blow the whistle, you can't change anything. So that would be FFLA's responsibility to be the work. And Tina really is the key in this person, in this process. But FFLA is kind of the oversight and the accountability to make sure that we don't overrun.
Okay. Yeah, I like what you said about, you know, assessing what's happening now in terms of what's happening, you know, short-term, long-term down the road. Okay. Second issue here is the robotics facility issue, and I have quite a few things to say about that. The, Pat, when you finished talking about it, you summarized with that the two thirty-eighty-four to two thirty-eighty-six property on Franklin was the most feasible of the things that you've been considering so far. Is that right?
Is that the one that is the fifty-four-hundred square feet?
I believe so, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But I'm seeing another property Monday.
Okay, so just, just a practical point on that, and then leading up to the, to the bigger point. The current robotic space in Loser is fifteen thousand square feet. And that is important because they need, they need a field space, and they need a lot of other spaces for the shop and for different things. Something that we haven't really discussed and that you may not know if you have Something that we haven't really discussed and that you may not know if you have been involved in the program is that that Lasser shop is not just the home of the high school team. It is the home of the eight to 11 middle school teams, times 12 kids each, times volunteer parents who also utilize the space. And in, in these past years, we've, we've had to balance that as a program very carefully. Who's, who's in here on Monday, who's in here on Tuesday, right? So that 5,400 square feet facility has no room to incorporate the middle school program. It, it also doesn't have any room for a lot of the high school team processes that are now occurring there, such as CNC, the production of, you know, 3D printing and CAD. And there are, there are functions that could be done offsite, of course, but that's not in the best interest of the team, not to have that synergy of all the sub-teams being able to work together. So I really strongly question the feasibility of putting this program into a space that is one-third the size of its current space. So understanding that, I, I have to go back to the original premise, which is, um, the, the events as they've unfolded in the last month have, have really been disappointing to me and to the team parents. Okay. There is a sense of urgency here. Okay. The, the, the competition that was just cited is being moved from April to, to July. That's the world's competition. Okay. That's the last thing that happens in a season. And so we don't even know yet what, you know, crunch time for the high school team is January to March. Okay. That is where, you know, that's their money season. So they have to be fine. I know you know this. They have to be fully moved in like tomorrow, right? They, they need to be fully set up and, and ready to rock, even if COVID nixes, um, some of the traditional ways the program has worked out. Cause these are very ingenious people and they're going to find ways to do the program under any circumstances, right? So the, the issue with moving the team to a, to a third site and then that we rent at expense and then moving them to the promise permanent site of the Franklin Road building, it just doesn't seem to make sense. The team should really move once. They should not move twice. They are willing to share that Franklin Road building with maintenance, although Brian had said it was not an option and I'm not really sure why. That space at Franklin Road is 15,000 square feet and it fully serves the team's need. The, the team is very concerned, rightly so, that they could be moved to a temporary facility. And then five years down the road, they're out of luck. There's no permanent facility. That did happen to them when the high school was built. They were promised a shop in the high school and at the end of the line, it was like, sorry, robotics, we're out of money. You have to go and live in Lasser, which, you know, we, we made lemon, lemonade out of lemons. But at the time, you know, that was a big blow. I mean, there's, the team has been working without heat in the winter in that building. We all just wear our ski jackets and we work. So, you know, the Lasser condition, although perfectly suited, you know, suited well enough to run a world champion program has not been ideal for those reasons, right? It would be nice to work in a building in January with heat on. So, um, it, 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 this would not be happening to the football team two months before the start of their season. Nobody would be saying to the football team, sorry, guys, you can't have your field. We're just going to rent you a field somewhere else and we'll figure out if you have a field in a few years. Okay. And it, it is a perfectly apt analogy because the team is as intense as a varsity sports team. It, it provides the benefits this program provides are exceptional. Okay. It, it forms careers. It forms lives. It gives thousands and thousands of dollars in scholarship opportunities for the students who are in it. And, uh, I mean, just speaking from the inside as a not too longstanding, but longstanding enough team parent and ex-coach, this is three weeks ago. It was two weeks from now, we'll have an answer and a done deal. And that was a week ago and there's no answer and there's no done deal. And the team is still twisting in the wind about what's going to happen to them. And I, I really, really want to know why they can't move into the Franklin Road building because that is the obvious solution that is best for our students.
Well, I'm definitely looking at another property Monday. With the chemicals and things like that that are in the building, that's concern. Keep in mind.
Our team parents, sorry to interrupt you, our, our team parents who many are, who are engineers themselves verified that the chemicals are not a problem. So they, they are not worried, they are not worried about that. They can, they can have that building cleaned out, cleaned up and, and ready to go in days.
And do keep in mind that, you know, part of the bond we passed, we said, we're going to build a steam center. And we're using that Franklin roadside unless we find something better at 15,000 square feet. But remember that won't just be robotics. It will be a steam center as part of that 15,000 square feet. So if we bring in like the panic robots that pluck and sort and do those things and have that type of training, you know, people that type of training are coming up making 60 to 80,000 dollars right away. We talked about the CNC machines, which are great. They're non-stop jobs. And I definitely agree with, you know, the role robotics plays. I know, like, you know, a lot of people have a senior daughter and, you know, she wants to go to the East Coast. And so she was looking at Boston U and I'm looking at price and I thought we could rule that off. And I said, first robotics, if you participate at least one year, $25,000 a year. Like, oh, she should have done robotics instead of band. She would have $100,000 in bank and going there. So I know it's definitely not moving as fast as anyone would like, but we don't have another spot for maintenance as an option right now. And that's why we're still.
But why, why can't one of these rental facilities be maintenance's home? Because we, you know, we know that maintenance isn't going to end up at Franklin Road. So, so why, why can't they be the ones to do two moves? You know, when robotics needs the space now and needs to do, what would like to do one move?
Right. So I can talk about, and correct me if I'm wrong, I can talk about the 5,400 square foot where they have the doors, the roll up doors, they're not high enough to fit the cell trucks. So we need additional construction there and most likely maintenance wouldn't be able to fit into that space. The other properties, sure, they can easily fit in the 10,000 square foot place. But then we're talking instead of $250,000 over five years. Paul, what would be the, and I don't want to misquote numbers, what would be the lease for five years on the 10,000 square foot property?
Sure. So it's, uh, yeah, so it'd be $12 a foot gross. So it'd be 120,000 a year times a five-year lease. So you're probably in the 500,000 range and that's 40 construction or any renovation you have to do to, um, have that space accorded.
Yeah. And, and the, the team is very mindful of not having hellacious rental expenses because again, we, the team is very afraid that in 2025, the money will be spent and there will be no home for our middle school and high school robotics teams.
Jennifer, Secretary or Dr. Cook, can I make a suggestion? Would you think, would you have the time available over the next few weeks to work with administration and help them work through this process?
It, it's already happening. The coaches and Superintendent Watson and, and Brian are, are working together, but it's, it's progresses. Wait, let me finish. Progress needs to be made with an extreme sense of urgency. I'm here as a community and parent advocate and I'm saying that there is a sense of urgency. I, I don't need to be intimately involved because the people who know more than I do aren't very involved.
Okay.
But we, we, I'm here to advocate for a valuable program that's frankly getting the shaft. And I am, I am very unhappy about it. In January, we had a meeting. Paul was there. I was there. Brian was there. Andy Rain was there. We were promised that robotics would be basically in the room every single step of the way. And so far, they, they have been going back on, on two major decisions. That's all that's happened since January. Okay. No progress, only regress. Okay. And, and the team has expressed to me, they don't need to stay with Bloomfield Hills Schools. They're experts in raising tens of thousands of dollars. They could go get a corporate sponsor tomorrow and they could live in one of these big warehouses and be their own team. I don't think anybody sitting in this room wants that to happen. And I'm, I'm not a person to make threats. I'm just saying that's the reality and it's woefully unfair to accommodate athletics and theater and everything else that happens in this district and not figure it out for a team with a sense of urgency to perform their function.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you, Jennifer. Mark?
Thank you.
Okay. Lisa?
I don't know where to start. My question, I guess, is for Darrell and Paul. Typically, what's the board involvement? Uh, I'm, this is the first I'm hearing that FFLA is going to be acting as kind of an oversight committee. Is that typical with other districts? Do they have a board committee that oversees construction of big bond projects?
That would be typical in my experience. So typically there's a building in site committee or what you would call an FFLA committee. And a lot of decisions and a lot of communication to the rest of the board, we would be brought through that committee. We see that structure, um, often, if not, um, on every bond program.
And I think the double that what Darrell mentioned, um, some districts will call it a building in site committee. Some call it a facility finance committee. So I think you have a lot of the same acronyms. But yeah, that's very typical to have two to three board representatives as part of a, you know, a kind of a eyes and ears for the rest of the board and ultimately to the community. So.
And as part of our, as part of our role here, um, you know, we can attend, you know, those committee meetings every month, give updates, you know, give updates at the board meeting, you know, whatever level of, um, you know, interest in the program that the board or the committee wants, you know, we're, we're willing to and dedicated to providing that information.
Okay. Is this just a board committee? And then the, the structure that Pat put up with community task force members and, and participation along the way? This is a community task force with maybe board members? And is that typical of what?
What I would see.
I can't, I can't remember what we did with the high school bond. I know we had some sort of task force, um, you know, overseeing as we went along. But, uh, I can't remember the role. Sorry.
Yeah. What I would say is where some districts.
Hey Darrell, was that, did I show Cynthia her handout? Maybe she wanted to provide some.
Just to give you some, some context, um, through the high school bond program, there was, we had a leadership committee that two board members served on. So, um, uh, Mark served on it, uh, Ingrid served on it. Then, uh, Mark fell off and Rob Herner had been on it, then he fell off and then I went on it. But there was two board members that served on the leadership committee through the whole process. And, and so that, uh, and we, we met regularly with Barton Mallow and our architects as, as the process, uh, moved forward so that, um, board was aware, not, not only of, um, the financial decisions that were being made and the, and, um, you know, how, what kind of response were coming in for bids and so on. The process towards getting the bids regular, ready to go out or what the, what building conditions may, may have occurred and, and issues that may arise in the process, um, understanding like when fire, fire protection was being put in and security was being put in and, um, so that we could also be a voice back to the board and to the community and hear what the, uh, instructional pieces that were being built into the design. And so we could really talk about that. But, um, the first phase that, that I think that Pat has shown, um, in the, in that feedback loop is to you, you're getting from the, um, cabinet and our, our leadership, then going, having some discussion with FFLA. I'm not sure who all will be with FFLA. I'm sure Barton Mallow will be part of those conversations as well. And I'm hoping that French will also be at the table along the process.
Cynthia, I just have a quick question on that. When you had your leadership team, and I don't know, and maybe Rob or I know Mark is, doesn't have a construction background. Were there any community members part of that team that had construction background? You know, where someone's telling me something about construction and, you know, and, you know, I don't know much about, you know, you know, what's going on. Did you bring in people from the community that had some sort of a construction background to be as part of that team?
No.
No, to, um, to, to Mrs. Afro's comments earlier on the community engagement, I, I mean, I applaud the administration for their efforts in this area. I mean, I've been working around school districts my entire career and, you know, this is an area frankly, that some districts struggle with. But, um, you know, Superintendent Watson, I mean, this has been a point since, you know, since the bond pass is, you know, what's the process that's going to be in place to make sure that that happens? You know, and committing to that scope and design group and, uh, other community members is, you know, it's, it's a difficult task, but one that, you know, they've spent a lot of time, you know, discussing and developing this plan. So, um, you know, and we're happy to, and, you know, kind of as our role to supply whatever information, whatever content's necessary, you know, along with French associates to help, you know, bring the community along as well as, you know, FFLA or, you know, whatever committee ends up being developed.
Okay. Thank you for that, Darrell, because, uh, that was going to be my next question was, um, you know, were you part of the planning of how this committee was going to take place? So I'm happy to hear that and happy that we're having committee. But, um, what happens if I wasn't part of scope and design? Uh, I, I just want to be part of this new forming committee. I just want to make sure we put it out there and allow people who maybe haven't been in a task force or committee before to be able to be part of it, if that's what they want to do.
So we, after we kind of looped it through FFLA, you know, that group, we move forward with it. And those interactions, well, there's a survey, there's a focus group, that'll be open to the community. And there'll be different strategic things asked of different people. For example, we're talking about office space in a middle school. The questions we're going to ask the students are going to be different than the questions we offer as the parents. Different than the question base and user, which are the administrators and the secretaries and the parents. They have to actually use that space. So it'll be a different type of groups. We get feedback from them. Then that will go to scope and design to help guide some of the decisions we're making.
Yeah. But Pat, what about people who, um, beyond being part of a, a one-time focus group? They want more involvement, like at the scope and design level, but they weren't on scope and design.
Then I would tell them to reach out to me directly so we can see where it might be a good fit for them to be involved.
All right. I'd like to put it out there and make it a little more transparent because there may be people who just aren't comfortable reaching out directly to you. But there's a way to get, get information to other people.
Yeah, let me talk about that more then.
Okay.
Because I will be open to all community members to provide the feedback. What the community won't be doing is designing those spaces, you know.
No, but if we're having community members, um, even though we're calling back community members that were really instrumental.
Yes, if they'd like to come back on scope and.
Yeah, but I think we have to allow other people who weren't part of it to, a chance or an opportunity, uh, to join it if they want to. Because, uh, coming up with a scope and design for a bond is a lot different than implementing. And this may be someone skill set or interested that wasn't part of it last time. You know, I just, I want to be fair to everybody.
I understand. Let's take a medical look there.
Okay. Um, okay. So Darrell, I think this is a question for you. What happens with something like robotics? Where you're the construction manager and you have physically found alternatives, but there's a human component and those alternatives aren't what the team needs or wants. Who's the person in all of this that talks to the parents and team members and people to make sure that it's more than just this space will move you here, move you here? I mean, what about the other things like fear of not being a permanent? You know, who talks to people and gets feedback, the human part of it? So we make it more.
In, in this situation, our role is to serve as an advisor, as the construction manager for the district. And so, you know, we've spent, um, you know, just, I would just say over the last several weeks, considerable amount of time just coming up with varying options. the last several weeks, considerable amount of time just coming up with varying options, helping, helping the district put cost estimates together, you know, working closely with Paul Wells at Plant Moran to, to look at, and Brian Goby to see what, what's out there, and then just help develop options. So in this case, I mean, you know, at one point we had, you know, five, you know, we had five options. There was a 4A and a 4B, a 5A and a 5B. And we'll, we'll do whatever it takes to provide the information for the district to make the best decision they can make. And, and that's what our role is. You know, the, the decision on where to put robotics would be a district and a board decision. We serve in an advisory role to help you make that decision.
All right.
And whatever information we can provide to help you do that.
I, I kind of suspected that, but maybe as a board and as a district, we should explore a person or people who, you know, make sure that the transition on the, on the other end is, because it's not interchangeable, as we're seeing with robotics. One X amount of square foot building isn't the same as another. So we have to, you know, we have to make sure that we consider people's, other than just will it physically work, we have to, other factors that have to go into the decision.
I was going to say one thing, but I now am going to say a second. Number one, I wanted to second everything that Dr. Cook said on robotics. And also, if you see the, what the comments have been around the table here, my comment initially, Paul's comment, Jennifer's comment, Lisa's comment. Yes, there are construction issues that have to be resolved, but there's also the interfacing to the parents and the users of the buildings. And that's where I think we're all seeing the, the disconnect right now. We got the bond passed, but now at the same time, you can't, too many cooks spoil the broth. You can't have everyone sitting there and designing the buildings. And also, Lisa, just so you know, the way this works is, the first year is like a design year, except for Loser, obviously, or, or the North Campus is a little different. But the first year was all design, and then it's build, 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 build for two years. This year, this first year is critical, because that's when the design occurs. And that's, now, at the same time, they're going detailed designs, they're figuring out where the plugs go, and what, you know, what color are the, you know, what type of panels they put in. Those are way too detailed for anyone in the community to get involved. But we need to have that interface, and I'm not sure what that interface is, because obviously, Daryl is on the construction side, and Brian's on the construction side, but we need to have that parent-community connection in some way. And I think you're hearing it common from all of us on this. And an example of where it hasn't worked is robotics. And I'll also say, another issue is, and we'll talk about this in future meetings, is on the IA. So we really, really need to make sure that we're, the customer are the parents and the students. And we need to take care of the customers, not just the school district.
And just as a practical point, this is, if robotics is the first physical transition of persons, it doesn't bode well for the other transitions of persons that are going to have to happen multiple, multiple times. We, we need to be much more forward-thinking much earlier about how all this is going to go down. Okay, I'll be quiet now.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, sorry, Cynthia.
Well, I, I, I guess, again, I'm going to go back to an old theme from early on in the high school conversation, which was instruction drives construction. And so the, to me, the key voice in this is our teachers. When we're talking, we've talked about sensory rooms and music concerns. To me, that's, they're going to be the teachers that are going to be the most important input into this phase of the process.
And I'll second that also.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Me too. Third it.
With that, I will call the meeting to adjourn. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, technology and everyone putting together this, our first ivory board meeting.
Yes. Thank you so much, tech team.